Welcome, everyone. I'm Counselor Chris Peddingle. See if I remember how to do this. It's Tuesday, September 3rd. We're at the Committee of the Whole. It's 2024. And like to acknowledge that we are conducting this meeting on the unceded and traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Howan Squan Quist Duknuma Tra Sko Homish Ok Mayo. Please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be available to the public to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting. Start with a motion to adopt the agenda. Mayor Hereford moves. Counselor French seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion approved. Thank you. And I will hand it off now to Ms. Morris to talk about the Sorka Annual Update. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. For those of you at home and for council, my name is Sarah Morris, and I am the Manager of Arts and Culture here at the District of Squamish. My pronouns are she/her, so please feel free to address me by those. And I'm here today with Ian Low from the Squamish Off-Road Cycling Association. So the Squamish Off-Road Cycling Association, or Sorka, have a four-year grants agreement with the District of Squamish. And they're here today to present on their work over the past four years in alignment with that agreement. Usually, this agreement falls under the Director of Recreation, but today I'm just stepping in to support as the grants portfolio falls under Arts and Culture. And with that, I will pass it over to Ian.
Good morning, Mayor. Council and staff, my name's Ian Low. I'm the Executive Director for Sorka. My presentation today, as Sarah noted, focuses on the activities of Sorka as they relate to the four-year grant agreement we have with the District of Squamish. I will often speak to some key initiatives Sorka is involved with that are outside of the agreement. I'm supported today by Jeff Norman, Sorka's president and chairperson, and one of our younger members, Arlo. So who is Sorka? Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. As a quick background, Sorka was founded in 1992 and has five core mandates. These can be seen on this screen. In 2024, our member count is on pace to finish at 3,400 members. As a point of reference, at the start of the current four-year agreement, 2020 closed with a total of 2,016 members. Our membership composition is 53% family, 46% individual, 41% female, 59% male. Sorka is governed by an elected 12-member Board of Directors. Additionally, the organization has six working committees composed of both Board of Directors and experts from the community. Sorka's Board of Directors has developed 16 governance policies that support the organization's operation. Each of these are reviewed, as well as our constitution and bylaws, is reviewed annually. In 2021, Sorka developed its first formal strategic plan. The plan aligns well with the Squamish Official Community Plan 2040, including maintain an integrated and connected network of multi-use recreational trails, protect and build on the district's recreation assets to grow the Squamish brand and our economy, while minimizing environmental and cultural impacts, support a healthy community by maximizing access to natural areas, open spaces, and outdoor recreation, increase options and amenities for walking, cycling, and rolling, improved road, trail, and bikeway connections throughout the district, and support reconciliation and healing with First Nations peoples, as well as engagement and partnerships, both in Squamish and beyond, as part of a larger region of reconciliation. So the District of Squamish Multi-Year Grant, it does end December 31st, 2024. And just as a quick recap, as per the activities we're responsible for within that grant, Sorka will maintain, repair, improve, and promote responsible use of recreational trails for pedestrians and mountain bike use in the District of Squamish. Sorka will implement a recreational trail maintenance program and optimize recreational opportunities. Sorka will secure rights for maintenance and public access to trails on private lands. Sorka will use its social media channels to provide education and guidance on proper trail use and etiquette. And Sorka will outreach, will use outreach to promote and guide users about trail maintenance programs. So this four-year grant agreement is critical for Sorka, as not only is it a significant amount of funds, but it's also the only four-year grant agreement that we have. So the longevity of the program is vitally important, as it allows for planning and for a little bit more than just one-year planning. So Sorka applies for roughly 20 additional government and private grants annually, to which it's rolling the dice on how many we are successful for. Trail building and maintenance. Trail building is at the very core of our association, as well as the agreement with District of Squamish. Sorka-led trail building and maintenance are delivered through four primary avenues, namely, that is the Sorka Paid Trail Crew. That is through third-party contract projects, Sorka-led volunteer dig days and related efforts, and then monetary compensation to independent trail builders and maintainers. This graph shows the increasing paid trail crew hours over the past four years to keep up to trail maintenance demands. So each year, Sorka staff create a hierarchy of trail projects based on a number of factors, including trail popularity, current condition, feedback from the community survey that we conduct, as well as many other factors. And then with this information, we develop the Trail Crew Operating Plan that is reviewed by the Trail Committee, currently composed of two Sorka Board of Directors and four appointed experts from the community. And that provides a blueprint for how the 6,000-plus hours of trail crew will be executed. This plan allows for some flexibility as work orders are inevitable. Those often are caused by windstorms, floods, droughts, erosion, drill feature inspection deficiencies, and like similar things. Increase of trail users, number of trails, land use agreement commitments, and challenging weather is causing increasing demands on the amount of trail crew hours needed to invest in the network every year. And one example I just wanted to focus on was something that we noticed on the 2022 and 2023 surveys about connectivity trails. And that's our feedback from our community was that there's, we needed to invest a little bit more time in getting those trails from the neighborhoods that connect into the proper network. So as a result of that feedback in those two years, Sorka worked with the District of Squamish, Squamish Trail Society to upgrade Koho Trail and the Covenant Trail, improve signage and rideability of Honor Roll and Home Run, connecting Garibaldi Highlands to South Alum Saint Trailhead, identify the tiering state of the Master Bridge, and has substantially invested in revitalizing that particular bridge. Trail safety improvements and new safety signage on Craig's Connector and Bracken Trail that connects Brackendale to Alice Lake area. And this fall, we'll be taking a large step to improving the safety of Jack's Trail, which is another key arterial trail between, to get to Alice Lake riding area. So first area was trail crew. Second area is contractor projects. So Sorka does not have the expertise, equipment, or capacity to perform all trail-related expenses and construction needed in the network. As such, we enter into contracts with third-party contractors following Sorka's contractor selection policy to perform specific jobs. So over the four-year agreement, Sorka has issued $680,000 of contracts to outside third-party companies. Some of the contracts are listed on this slide. Sorka's volunteer dig days are the roots of our organization. I believe that was why the organization was originally founded. And in the early 1990s and 2000s, it was often to do with focusing on new trail builds, whereas today, they're almost exclusively focused on trail maintenance. In 2021 and 2022, various COVID restrictions resulted in some clever dig days, but they were much smaller, and we were following all suggested safety protocols. In 2023 and 2024, Sorka has or will facilitate over 16 annual dig days between March and December, contributing a further 2,500 hours per year into the trail network. And those are supervised hours. Despite some volunteer fatigue, as you see in other volunteer roles within the organization, our dig days remain a healthy volume of interest, which is great to see. Additionally, Sorka organizes virtual trail maintenance events, such as the Rush Cutting Challenge, which contribute an additional 200 roughly hours into the trail network. The final trail building and maintenance area that Sorka has made a concentrated effort on in the last four years is with the independent trail building community. This has led to the annual Beers with Builders event, whereby we invite all independent builders to an early-season meeting to share what Sorka will be focusing on over the next year. This and other outreach efforts have resulted in more volunteers tapping into our volunteer maintenance and builder support policy, where conditional of a few rules, they can be compensated for building and maintenance supplies, equipment, and even mileage to the worksite. Examples of trails built or maintained recently using this funding mechanism include Stone Ridge, Lower Lumber, Angry M, Upper Intergalactic, Lower Intergalactic, and many more. Advocacy is a core pillar to Sorka. Sorka has delivered on our commitment to the District of Squamish to secure rights for maintenance and public access to trails on private lands by entering into or renewing these listed agreements in the last four years. So some of these include the 2022 Memorandum of Understanding with Squamish Nation, 2022 District Lots 508, 509, that's Block Tusk Logging Land Use Agreement, 2023, the Czechi Debris Barrier Trail Mitigation Plan, 2024, Sko Homish Seans Guide Developments Land Use Agreement for the seven parcels in the Sko Homish, in the Czechi Fan Trail area. As well as in 2023, we renewed a 10-year partnership agreement with Rec Sites Trails. We also renewed and added three trails in the Garibaldi National Park with the BC Parks and a few others. With each agreement, sorry, Sorka is actively engaged with a number of additional landowners, land managers, and other land-related interest groups to advocate and for and support formal and informal access for the public to these trails. With each agreement, Sorka is committing to additional responsibilities, and these responsibilities come with additional costs. Some of you may have seen that a report that was circulated in January this year. So Sorka released the Social, Cultural, and Economic Impact of Mountain Biking in Squamish Report. That report, which was data collected from a six-month period in 2023, indicates that mountain bike visitor spending has increased from 9.9 million in 2016 to 26 million in 2023. Again, this was just over a six-month period, the 2023 data. Extrapolating this over the full season and adjusting for seasonality and adding resident spending, the mountain biking brings in roughly $60 million in total spending to the community. This growth is fantastic for our Squamish economy. However, as most visiting riders do not financially contribute to Sorka, it's increasingly difficult to keep up with the maintenance required to sustain or build upon this growth. It's also important to note that the $60 million figure does not include the economic impact of all events that rely on the trail network, such as Squamish 50 Series of Events, the Squamish Enduro, Fearless Ride Lab, Hallback, Hot Air Heels, et cetera. Outreach, education, communication, that's all, again, core pillars within our agreement with the District of Squamish. So Sorka communicates to its members and broader trail use community following an e-newsletter medium. So these weekly e-newsletters are circulated to approximately 6,000 subscribers with two to five articles related to upcoming events, trail work, rider education, safety messaging, advocacy updates, etiquette, and generally outreach. In addition, we have our social media accounts, which we're on about three to four social media posts or stories weekly, and that's to 11,000-plus Instagram and Facebook followers. Additionally, Sorka publishes a semi-annual membership update called Local Dirt. We facilitate a fall community survey. Sorka hosts an all-candidate meeting for the outdoor rec sector in advance of municipal elections. We support education related to indigenous history of the lands we ride on. We work with local conservation officers to warn predatory wildlife within the trails, and we support messaging related to wildfire danger. Additionally, beyond our core education and outreach initiatives, we also are asked to support with other messaging that comes up. Some examples include working with Squamish Nation, Rec Sites and Trails, and Conservation Officer to develop a "You May Encounter Hunters" signage that we were asked to put up in various areas of the network. E-bike class system messaging and what types of bikes are allowed where. Sorka worked with Channelist Bike Shop and Jeremy Ballarat to open the first local tire and tube recycling program earlier this year. Sorka worked closely with Charcoal Resource Group to develop the Ring Creek North Hauling Safety Standards, including signage, speed controls, and various other standards to help reduce the change, the chances of vehicle cyclist conflict on the north side connector. And then we have events. So events are a core pillar of Sorka. Sorka's events committee organize over 30 events per year, including weekly Cinco races and social rides, dig days, annual anniversary event, volunteer appreciation party, beers for builders, spring tune-up, and many more. These are supported by 40 to 50 local businesses and over 300 unique volunteers from the community. Through our events, Sorka also helps fundraise for other local charities and nonprofits, including Pearl Space, Squamish Hospice, Squamish Search and Rescue, and Team Squamish Cycling. So all the slides up to this point are very directly related to our core agreement with District of Squamish. I would be remiss not to mention a few other programs that, as well as a couple of capital projects that Sorka is involved with. In addition to our community races, Sorka also facilitates community programming. And one that we're very passionate about is the Squamish Nation Youth Mountain Bike Program. So Sorka has been passionately supporting this program since its grassroots inception in 2019. Today, Sorka invests roughly $30,000 a year to secure, to ensure these Squamish Nation youth have a zero-barrier access to the sport of mountain biking and skilled and trained coaching. From a youth inclusivity perspective, Sorka organizes a wide range of rides and events to support underrepresented groups. These include youth women rides, women's races and dig days, introductory races, and GBLTQ events. Thanks to e-bike, current e-bike technology, there's a growing segment of adaptive mountain bikers embracing this sport of mountain biking. This has resulted in a need to retrofit the trails to accommodate the wider wheelbase of these specialized trikes and sometimes for tired bikes. Over the last four years, Sorka has built two new adaptive trails in the network and retrofitted several others to make them adaptive, mountain bike-friendly. We now look at all trail maintenance through an adaptive mountain biking lens, as we'd like to, we aspire to be leader in the mountain bike, in the adaptive mountain bike-friendly world. Yet, we also recognize that this will take a lot of funding to do so. And then capital projects. Pictured here is the Sorka Youth Mountain Bike Skills Park at Brandon Park. So since 2021, we've addressed that particular facility and the South Alum Saint, or as some call it, the pseudo Trailhead Parking. So between fall 2021 and spring 2024, Sorka invested $240,000 in rebuilding the youth skills park to allow for a safe learning environment for youth and newer riders. The market value for that project was well over $400,000. Secondly, and I'll throw outside of the District of Squamish boundaries, was the completion of the South Alum Saint or pseudo Trailhead rebuild. Sorka was aware of the significant public safety concerns on Garibaldi Park Road, so we felt some responsibility to help resolve it. After five years of planning and permits, in spring 2014, Sorka led the expansion of this preeminent trailhead, expanding the car capacity from 20 cars to 110, and removing significant foot, bike, vehicle, and shuttle traffic from Garibaldi Park Road. Project was completed at a Sorka cost of $127,000, yet had a market, has a market value of over $250,000. So when we combine all aspects of kind of our buckets of trail costs, so Sorka's trail maintenance scope extends far beyond the paid trail crew. So when you combine trail crew, trail contractor expenses, volunteer support, and administration, the trail expenses have averaged over $550,000 for the last two years, just to keep up to current demands. So you can see on the table in that drawing, the escalated costs. So where are we now and what's next for Sorka? So a good question, and these are, these are the facts. So the sport has grown from a fringe activity to a substantial economic generator in less than 20 years and is not slowing down. Trails are a core amenity migration and retention asset for the residents, for residents and businesses of Skomish. The Skomish Mountain Bike Trail Network is internationally recognized tourism attraction, which is being maintained by a nonprofit bike association and volunteers. The sport is diversifying and an important tool for indigenous reconciliation. So not only is it appropriate and the right thing for Sorka to do to ensure Skomish Nation youth have a barrier-free avenue to participate in mountain biking, but it also aligns very well to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada Calls to Action Number 89 and 90, calling for reducing barriers to sports and increasing access to community sports programs. The model of trails, trail maintenance, and demands on the lands is changing at the same pace as the sport itself. As Sorka increases its line use agreements for public access, we are increasing our operating responsibilities. Skomish's Trail Network is key for attracting growing number of events hosted in our community. And in order to maintain our current service delivery, when we've looked at our five-year plan, Sorka needs to increase its revenues by $50,000 per year, starting in 2026. And Sorka looks forward to working with the District of Skomish to hopefully renew a multi-year grant agreement. And with all of that, I would like to thank Mayor and Council for your support over the last four years.
All right. Thank you very much. And yeah, thanks for all the incredible work that that circuit does. Counsel, any questions? Counsel French?
Thanks Chair. And thanks for the report. It was awesome, very informative. I think I heard somewhere in there your, the Sorka membership number. Can you tell us that number again? Because the number I think I heard, I didn't believe.
So it's 3,400, 3,400.
Okay. That's more in line with, outside of what I heard, reality. So the report indicates to maintain the same service delivery, Sorka needs to increase revenues by a minimum of $50,000 a year, starting in 2026. I wonder if you could just expand a little bit on that. Where do you envision the additional 50K coming from? Government, grants, donations, memberships, event fees? All the above? Are you looking for particular emphasis on any source?
I, so yes, so I, what, why 2026 and why not 2025? I guess it would be kind of, so during COVID, there was a little bit of a buildup of surplus. So over the last couple of years, we've exercised the majority of that surplus. And then starting 2026, we're back to kind of a no surplus budget. And in order to maintain today's kind of usage, we need to be increasing by a minimum of $50,000. And that's just what we know that's going to be happening. So to answer your question about where it's coming from, yeah, I mean, there's, there's more grants out there. Grants are difficult. I'm not from a long pedigree of nonprofit business, and grants are a tough way to operate a business and something that I would like to be weaning off of in the future, especially one-year agreements. But yes, that's, if it doesn't come from that, it just won't be done, and then we'll just have to peel back. Trail group is really the biggest variable.
Yeah, the struggle is real. I think back to my testamental organizing days where it took a few years to figure it out, but multi-year agreements were so important for stability. I get it. Okay, and I have one more question. The current Sorka strategic plan has an end date of 2024. So I'm wondering if you just tell us a little bit more about your plans for updating the strategic initiatives?
Yeah, we have our first workshop on October 8th to do our renewal. I don't think it's going to be anything massive, big picture difference. Like a lot of those kind of core pillars are the same core pillars that we have today. Potentially, there'll be a little bit more on volunteer experience because we have noticed certain areas are waning with the volunteer. And ideally, you're kind of growing that as your association is growing. And I would say that it's kind of flatlining the volunteers, so trying to incorporate some volunteer. Because again, that's, that's a savings to the association. If you can increase volunteer, the experience and interest, then there's, there's another area that's saving from that. So I think there'll be, be a little bit more attention on volunteer experience, and we'll see where the, the, the board decides to kind of take it. We did already poll our community, so all of our members were polled in fall last year about what changes they'd like to see. There are certainly some creative suggestions that were made, but I'm not sure if those were the consensus, so.
Thanks Chair.
Counsel Greenlaw?
Thanks, through the chair. Thanks for the presentation. Like, I don't know, Sorka is just so loved in this community, you know, and this table is no exception. It's such a fantastic contributor to our community. And I, I'm always kind of thinking about funding. And I'm just wondering if we can go back to that funding gap. I was wondering if you had any idea of ways that you can monetize some of your events? Or I don't know, ways to monetize, to bring in funding from a new source? Do you have any ideas in that sense?
I mean, we'll have, like, I'm sure at the upcoming meetings, we'll probably have some big brainchild, I guess. Is a social enterprise business feasible within our organization is? So yeah, I mean, we're certainly not closed to new ideas. Unfortunately, we, we also look down the path of going through as a charity. So they're, they're not allowing that anymore within the province for bike orgs to be charities. After NSMBA, they kind of closed the doors on that. And it's also, it would, it would limit the scope of the things that we are dealing with. So we've kind of looked at a few different avenues that are outside of just increasing sponsorships or increasing grants, because it is time to kind of get a little bit creative. But so I do see that there's a potential for a social enterprise out there. There is potential for different grants that we've never tapped into before that are multi-year grants. But a lot of unknowns still in this. And I know at the same time, the MTBA, the kind of somewhat of the provincial organization, they're also trying to get associations to do the same work that we've done with reset back to quantify and how big this, this industry is, so that then there's a little bit more provincial kind of voice to potentially get some more provincial support.
Right, yeah, like when they see how much financial advantage there is to having this organization, then maybe there's more avenues for funding kind of thing. Yeah, that makes sense. And then you mentioned the breakdown of riders coming to town and how much revenue that's bringing. I was wondering if you have any idea of a breakdown of how many people spend the night when they're coming in to ride, or if they're just coming in for the day and leaving?
Yeah, so it's, sorry, through the chair. Yes, so basically, when we did our six-month study, we recognized that 50%, it was almost a 50.3% of people were actually visiting the area. So of those visitors, 50% were actually staying overnight. So of that 50% that were staying overnight, the average length of stay, being an old hotelier myself, was 6.2 nights, which is like an unbelievable aspirational number. So of the ones that are staying overnight, the average was 6.2 nights. And I also want to recognize that, again, because our statistician that would helped us with this report, anyone that stays over 29 nights is no longer considered a visitor. So we actually had to net out 2.3% of our people because they're considered short-term residents and not visitors. So it would have even been a higher number than that 6.2% if we could have included the people that we met that stayed for six months last year, or the people that were here for three months last year. So it was, it was a fascinating study.
Yeah, that's really interesting because I, I recall talking with Tourism Skomish, and they were saying that something like any visitor that spends the night spends like three times as much money in the community as somebody who just comes and goes, you know? So that's, that's a really important piece of information there. And I just have a question that's just out of curiosity. There's been a huge increase in e-mountain bikes cruising around. And I was wondering if that is like more damaging to the trails, if, if you're noticing an impact on the trails from that? You don't have to answer that, that's endangered.
We, we, we don't think it's contributing, like the original vision of mountain bikes, of e-mountain bikes is like, oh, they're heavier, they got more braking, they're, they can go farther on there, they're going to deteriorate the trails much more. We're not necessarily seeing that. We recognize that there are a lot more mountain bikers, sorry, e-mountain bikers out there. And to us, they are just part of our community. It's, 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 it's here, and there's going to be growing. 70% of bike sales, mountain bike sales in Europe are now e-mountain bikes. We're not there yet, but we may get there. And I don't think that it's a major threat to the condition of the trails. I just think it's, it's, it's another group that's growing that are out on our trails that we then have to maintain those trails, so.
Yeah, again, well, that's good to hear. Thanks.
Hey, I'll go to Mayor Herford and then Counsel Hamilton.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. A lot, a lot to, to run through. I'm always interested in the, in the statistics, so thank you to Counsel French for asking that membership number. I, I misheard that as well. But could you run through the stats again as far as the membership goes? And I'm curious to see how the membership stats sort of tie into the visitor stats. Like, are they, are they similar and such? Like my set, my second piece. I just wonder how close those things are. And if you don't know, that's totally, that's totally fine. But what was the, the breakdown? You had some breakdowns in the membership in one of the early slides that I missed.
Yes, so, yes, we're on pace. So we're like 3250 or something right now, right, for the year. So we're on pace for the 3,400 this year. And at last time I checked, our composition was 53% family memberships, 46% individual memberships. And then as far as gender, it was 41% female, 59% male. And now I forgot part B.
Oh, right. Well, I just wondered, yeah, if you're seeing the visitor numbers sort of reflect generally that, or if it's, if there's a difference between the two?
We, our 41% female outpaced the visitor numbers. I don't remember the number specifically, but it was, I would wager it was around 30% female visitors. And as, as far as demographics, as we track our demographics for all of our events, it's always humbling as, as a now 50-year-old. It's, I think it's 36, no, it's before, between 32 and 36 is our average age at the events. 32 more so for the enduros and 36 for the XC events. But yes, that is the reality.
I won't take the bait about reflecting on the aging process, but thank you. I wondered about, I was happy to hear about the, you speak about the connector trails and the importance to the community there and taking that, some of those tasks on. It made me think about that sort of getting into the space that maybe we see Skomish Trail Society sort of operate in. And I wondered around if there are examples of cooperation with other organizations. I know that the Sorka funding has sometimes has flown, flowed through to sometimes other organizations. Just wondered if you could speak to sort of examples of, of cooperation or where that sort of category of initiatives are at this point?
I mean, off the top of my head, so yes, you're right. When, when we look to do the work on Koho, that was an interesting one because that's, SDS kind of see themselves as working in the valley, and then we see ourselves working on the mountain bike trails, and that was kind of in between. And it also had some weird right-of-way's and district attachments. So we had to get all parties involved in that. We all recognized it had to be done because there was some dangerous kind of features on there, like the bridges that were deteriorating. So we all worked together in collaboration to kind of get that project done. We are in communication with groups like the SDBA, which is the Skomish Dirt Bike Association, on any kind of overlapping trails. So for instance, like the climb out of Darwoods, that's an area that mountain bikers need, and it's an area that SDBA needs. So we've talked about some collaborative efforts on any kind of overlapping trails that our, our trail crew can be, kind of be utilized. But I can't think of any others off the top of my head.
Counsel Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very much for the great presentation and everything you do and have done for the past. How, how long have you been Executive Director? It's around four years?
January 2024, 2022.
2022, okay, so for the last two, or two, or so, two or three years. It's fantastic work. One of the things you, you didn't hit upon, but it has struck me is the number of Skomish locals competing at the world level in, in multiple disciplines. Do you happen to know how many Skomish locals were in Andorra for the World Championships?
Yeah. Skomish locals, between, because it was, it was, it was the World Championships for XC and downhill. It was, it was not for Enduro. So for those two alone, I think there was seven competitors. Every downhill competitor at the World Championships for Canada was from the Sea and Sky region, which was, it's, yeah, I'm trying not to get personal here, so.
Yeah. It, it's pretty mind-boggling how much power, how much influence Sorka and the work Sorka has done supporting youth mountain biking has made on the world stage of mountain biking. Because it's these athletes who are pushing the boundaries, who are pushing the sport. So Sorka is bearing a significant amount of responsibility for, for pushing the sport of mountain biking altogether. It's absolutely amazing. And I think it's a piece we shouldn't, we can't underestimate. It's, if, if we were to think about how much we'd need to invest to, to put seven Skomish folks for, into the NHL or into the Olympics for swimming or something, it would be shocking how much we would need to, to put in there. So that side of thing, it should not be forgotten. One thing, and on a different note, you mentioned the visitor contributions. So visitors contribute a lot to staying in hotels, grabbing a coffee, all that stuff, buying some, fixing their bikes when they, buying some parts. But it's that contribution to Sorka that I know there's a lot of promotion on the trails, like here's ways to give back. Can you see of any other ways, particularly any ways that the district might be able to, to facilitate for ensuring that or encouraging visitors to contribute directly to Sorka when they come for the weekend to, to play on the trails?
No, so as you allude to, we do have some signage out there right now. Every person that contributes a dollar to Sorka, it comes to be, and over the last six months, I've been asking them where they found out about Sorka and how they even found out about an avenue to donate, and the signs work. That's what we've concluded is that the signs work. So we are looking at increasing that signage in a tasteful manner in, within the network. There's, and again, this, anything would have to go through the right agencies and authorities, but we don't, we don't, we won't, I don't think we want to go down the path of user fees. Because other, you can, but there is avenues to do that. And the Snowmobile Association of British Columbia, or whatever their acronym is, have gone down that path. I don't think it is a, I mean, it's worthy of the conversation, but I don't think it's also what we want to be doing on, on the lands around here. But if we do still want to have maintained trails, it may be something that we have to look a little bit more seriously at in the future.
Thanks. And, and the other thing you touched upon is sharing trails between mountain bikes, dirt bikes, and other trail users. And I want to say, I think Sorka has done an amazing job of sort of flagging and letting mountain bikers know when this is a shared trail. So for example, Pomplamoose, when it comes down out onto Jack's Trail, there's a big side, you're, you know, slow down. You're coming on to a different type of trail. So I just want to really encourage that type of promotion of shared use. And that goes in both directions, right? The letting hikers know who may not be familiar with the trail network that they're coming into what is traditionally used as a downhill mountain bike trails to be conscious of mountain bikers. So yeah, more of that, but thank you for everything you do. Sorka is an amazing contribution to our community.
Yeah, just again, one of my own first, and then I'll go to you, back to Mayor Herford.
Yeah, just again, one of my own first, and then I'll go to you, back to Mayor Herford. Um just picking up on some of the other questions, I um and just understanding where where some of the funding is coming from in terms of tr- trail use, direct trail use, I guess. Um there's the membership now, and so curious, and and sorry, there's so much data in your presentation. Um do we have an understanding of how many locals versus visitors are buying memberships? And then um just wondering if you have any reflections on the Trail Pass program, which I gather is not active at the moment, which seemed like a an attempt to capture some of the visitor sort of use and and just wondering if you can just speak to, yeah, where that sort of membership, Trail Pass, where you see that funding? You know, how that splits and and what the opportunities were, struggles in there?
Thank you. Um so roughly eighty seven percent of our membership are Skolmish residents. Um and then obviously a fairly large percentage um from the corridor and that, like kind of talking like North Van to Pemberton. Um and then few would be outside of that, uh of those actual members. Um it's the Skolmish, uh the the Trail Pass. Um we're, a few years ago, we were advised that calling it a pass is a little bit dangerous um from a a a risk and liability perspective, so we did somewhat abandon that program. Um we did try the Trail Supporter, it's it's now called um as as kind of an interim to potentially capture some of those out of towners. I think it was thirty dollars. Um there's some challenges with that as well, uh because it's it's, we we don't want that to be just an easy out for um or a cheaper option for for locals to purchase and then think that okay, that they've done their their part. So um so we 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 haven't really kind of, other than the signage and the additional donations and the QR codes and the tip tap machines that are then throughout the town. Um I I think there's still more opportunity amongst those visiting riders to even be educated about who it is that is maintaining that trail, and that it's not free to maintain the trail. And it's like, because a lot of people, like most, most people, when you're riding anywhere else, there is a user fee. So it it is kind of a special thing that we have here. Um and and they would donate if they just had a very easy avenue to donate. And so i- it is trying to address that, and I think there is some additional funding that could be coming in through that mechanism. And it's and it's very fair and reasonable ask as well for for tourists that are coming in. Um but but we haven't necessarily cracked that egg yet.
Okay, thank you, uh Mayor Herford, and then Counselor Greenlaw.
I was gonna move receipt, but if Counselor Greenlaw has a question, uh.
I just have a super simple question. Have have you thought of putting like donation boxes at trailheads for people to? Because it would be really nice to be able to um, you know, put some of the financial burden on these visitors who are coming to town as opposed to our community members. You know, because they're enjoying the trails too, right?
Um it it has been discussed, and we have a membership volunteer and MPF fundraising committee. Um and it it has something that was, did come out of that committee. That's the same committee that introduced the tip tap machines. So those, we started as, I think there's three or four, there's four of them originally within the community, and there's costs associated with those in front of the organization. So we've cut it down to two, and they're 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 actually now our profit, they drive a profit, those those two. The original idea with those was to have those at the trailheads. Um a lot of our trailheads don't have cell signal, so and you've got a little bit of a problem. And I I don't, I I I love the idea, I could think of think of Dakota Ridge Cross Country Ski Place, and you put in your five dollars cash. I don't think it'll work along Caribou Lee Park Road, just be due to the vandalism that we see of our parking facility and the other facilities and the trail signage and the kiosks that we have. So I I'm not confident that like an old school kind of cash in this box is gonna work um for the for those types of ones.
Yeah, and lots of people don't carry cash anymore, but I'm just trying to think of ways to kind of monetize the out of towners, you know what I mean? Anyways, yeah, that's all I got.
Hey, and I think I saw a motion to receive.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion to receive and request the slide decked so we can include it in the the record.
A secondary, Counselor French seconds, uh any discussion or? No, okay, I will, oh, Counselor Hamilton?
Yeah, sorry, so in addition to all the thanks, I just want to highlight, this is what I think we as a district uh should be doing more of in terms of partnerships with community members to really leverage the the passions and commitments of our community members to get stuff done for things that they want. So, thanks.
Yeah, thanks again for the presentation and to uh reiterate, I guess my colleagues um comment, I think Sorka is one of the shining examples of how uh community organizations can take a bit of district money and multiply it many times and have a huge benefit for the whole community. So it's a real example, not just for mountain biking, but for our our community as a whole on how we can make uh our community better for ourselves. So thank you so much for all the hard work and for the presentation. Uh so thank you. Uh with that, uh before I move on to the next item, I'll just sort of say I kind of glossed. Oh, yes, good, good point. Uh so all those in favor, well, she carries, thank you. Uh speaking of forgetting things, uh I did want to just take a second to welcome everyone back. We've had a month off of the council chambers. It's been a little while since we've seen each other in person, some of us, and I hope everyone's had a a good break. Uh I know I'm sort of mentally there, ready to get back at it, and we've got a pretty full agenda. I think I'm ready to get back at it. I'm not sure. There's lots coming up, uh so it's really good to be back here and to see everyone again. Little bit chilly this morning, but uh it's still uh good to to have everyone back. Um with that, what time is it? Oh, we lost our clock. Oh, oh, okay. So we are, we are a little bit, we are behind, okay, so let's proceed with this item and um, yeah, so I will call up Ms. Blodel, Bludo, uh pardon me, and Ms. Wells to speak about the uh procedure by law.
Hello, good morning. Uh my name is Melissa Pampudo. I'm the manager of Legislative Services, and I'm here today with Carrie Wells, Director of Corporate Administration. And today we are presenting a new procedure by law for council consideration and feedback. The presentation will include an overview of procedure bylaws in general, uh the objectives of this specific bylaw revision, as well as review the highlight, the high level changes that are suggested between the current procedure bylaw and the proposed bylaw. The requirement to establish a procedure bylaw is prescribed in the community charter and is required to include information regarding how meetings are conducted, how decisions are made and recorded, how participants, including the public, are involved in meetings, uh how meeting administration, including how meetings are scheduled and notice requirements. Procedure bylaws assist in providing clarity and transparency to council staff and the public regarding meeting procedures and the council decision making process. That being said, procedure bylaws are also unique, and they can be tailored to address specific needs of council. The objectives of this bylaw update included modernizing the districts, the district's current bylaw and improving usability. This included separating out complex clauses and changing word choice in some clauses while not changing the intent. Several clauses have been removed as the requirements specified in the clause have not been required for several council terms or no longer align with current district process. Uh select clauses have also been removed if they are addressed by legislation or are of an operational nature. We've also added many clauses uh to address specific uh procedural situations. A comprehensive list of the major changes uh is included in Attachment One of the Report to Council. However, I would like to highlight five of the recommended changes. The first change is to the Acting Mayor section. Uh this recommended change is regarding the Acting Mayor Appointment Deadline, and the recommendation is to change it from December to November. A similar change has been made in Section five point four under Regular Business Meetings uh that specifies when the annual council meeting schedule will be determined. Uh this will uh increase consistency year over year, including during the election cycle, and will help improve transparency with the public. So they have more time with the appointment schedule and with the regular business meeting schedule. The second change is to electronic participation at council meetings. This is Section Six. The current bylaw stipulates that a maximum of three council members may participate electronically unless an electronic council meeting is called. Staff recommend removing this requirement and replacing it with the requirement that the chair participate in person. The chair and all council members may participate electronically if an electronic council meeting is called. The third change is regarding a new section. It's called Opportunities for Public Comment. This is Section Ten. Uh this was formerly Section Eleven, Positions and Delegations. This section has been expanded to include clearer procedures regarding delegation and proclamation requests, requests to speak under unscheduled public attendance at regular council meetings, and requests to speak under open question period at regular business meetings. Staff also recommend including Section ten point eleven, which clarifies when public comment requests may be declined by council or the mayor, and includes topics that are outside the jurisdiction of the District of Squamish, topics that are related to bylaw enforcement action taken by the district, matters that are subject to a public hearing or an issue for which a public hearing is optional or prohibited. And the procedures to address unscheduled public attendance, attendance are contingent on changes to the order of the regular business meeting items, and that's Section eight point three. So staff recommend changing the order of the regular business meeting items to address unscheduled public attendance exclusively under Item Four on the Agenda. This will eliminate members of the public who have been approved to speak from having to wait until the end of the meeting, and so will simplify the process for the public. Final change I'd like to cover is regarding uh the Committee of the Whole Meeting Section. This is Section uh ten point or five point ten through five point twelve in the current bylaw. Several sections have been removed if they, as they are outdated and are no longer applicable to the district's current processes. Staff recommend adding two new sec, new clauses to this section. Uh the first clarifies that Committee of the Whole Meetings are normally held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, despite this being the first Tuesday of the month. I can replace that. Uh the second clarifies motions passed at Committee of the Whole Meetings that uh no longer need to be ratified at a subsequent regular or special business meetings. And it also specifies that those motions that do do need to be ratified can be done so under the consent agenda on the regular business meeting schedule or agenda, and both both clauses are consistent with district process currently. Uh the staff recommendation today is requesting feedback from council regarding the proposed bylaw and consideration of first three readings at a future regular business meeting. Thank you for your time today, and I look forward to receiving your feedback.
Okay, thank you. We'll, I guess, start with questions and then move to uh comments. So, uh Mayor Herford?
Um, thank you, um and thank you for the work on this. It was a lot to go to go through, but I feels generally like we're going in the right direction. I do have a couple of questions. Um I'm curious about the the chair not participating electronically. Um it seems that in Section five point eight and five point nine, which um dictates uh electro- electronic um participation or meetings, it it doesn't really say what criteria needs to be met to declare the meeting, electronic meeting in there as far as I could see. So if I was, it gives someone, the chair, say the mayor, uh in my, in in this case, um if I wanted to declare the meeting electronic meeting, even if I was the only one not attending, I, the chair, then I could still chair the meeting? It just seems like these two pieces don't quite fit. Is that in, is that intentional, or is that just a uh an oddity of how these things go together?
It isn't intentional. Uh both of these sections are very prescribed in the legislation in terms of the language that needs to be included. Uh and one of the thoughts around both electronic council meetings and electronic participation at council meetings was making it as accessible as possible to continue to facilitate our meetings if there was a situation like we've experienced in the past, and just ensuring that we as the district aren't hindered in 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 continuing our current process. Um but I'm happy to look at that further before the bylaw comes back.
Yeah, I just, I think um I've had mixed uh through my time as as mayor and as uh chairing when, as acting mayor. I've had, I've chaired electronically where where there was a mix of people, and uh I could think of times that it was beneficial to to do that, and it was fine. I could think other times it was challenging. I just wondered where this particular piece came of of not, the chair not participating electronically. It can always bow out if it's not, you know, if it's not working, or if it would work better the other way. I just wonder about being prescriptive in here and where where that particular piece came from. Was there any, was there an example or a reason for this rule?
Uh in my experience, typically, and we're not putting aside electronic meetings, so this is when people are participating electronically, um because there could be members of the audience in in the chambers. It's always been best if the chair is actually in the in the meeting room. Um I mean, it's council's discretion whether or not they wanted to approve something like that. Are you looking for a specific, and then back to a different question, are you looking for specific criteria as to when an electronic council meeting would be called? As opposed to just kind of leaving it?
Yeah, I was looking for the criteria, and thank you for the first, the first answer. That makes that makes sense for controlling the gallery and and having a feel for what's actually happening in the physical space. Um but the, yeah, the criteria for calling electronic meeting, it says electronic meeting can be can be called and and so on, but it doesn't really say if quorum can't be achieved in uh, you know, in person, then the meeting, you know, like that's one example I could think of where we need to label it as a as an electronic meeting, or there's not a physical space because something happened, or I don't I don't know what this, those possible scenarios are, but um it just says advanced notice and just what you have to do if you want to call it an electronic meeting. So uh, yeah, it, I know we have to be prescriptive of what's here, can we, but is there another piece to that that would lead to like what, when that decision would be would be made, or some additional clarity, I think?
You can prescribe what situations you would want to have an electronic meeting under, or you can leave it flexible so that you don't have to be tied to that criteria. Um but if you wanted, you know, for example, in in instances of a pandemic or an emergency situation, um if there isn't quorum, that type of thing. Um however, you are then limiting yourself to only those situations. So uh depends on on what council is looking for in that regard.
Um from my perspective, I think having something that's probably the middle ground of those two uh spaces where, so we could so that it's clear for folks if they're, although I don't know how many folks go into their procedure by law, but you know, this is really um what we're we're running under is uh, you know, example of, yeah, if if quorum's not possible in person, it'll be held, uh electronic meeting will be called, or any other circumstance, or you know, like just add some flexibility there, you know, at the discretion of the mayor or the chair, or however you'd like. I I do think it's, it's good to put sort of some examples of why, and then leave it open to who knows what other scenario that we haven't experienced or or thought of yet. So um if there could be a couple of examples in there, when that would be uh. So if there could be a couple of examples in there, when that would be a reasonable thing or a threshold met, that would be, I think that'd be helpful for folks trying to understand why. This is, I'm going to suggest that most people would likely go back to this to understand why something happened, rather than how does this happen? So I think some explanation there would be helpful, but leaving room for the unknown, where it just seems appropriate to do that for whatever reason. That's my two bits, but I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, Counsel Greenlaw, and then Counsel Hamilton, then French.
Thanks. Through the Chair, I was wondering if you could speak to the need to remove the Section 7.2 there, talking about the quarterly updates of identifying things that have been in the clothes that need to come to the public?
This is a, through the Chair, this is a section that we have not currently been, staff have not currently been meeting. And we've found that our process as a district has evolved that when items need to come out into the public, we do it on an as-needed basis. It isn't as prescriptive as on a quarterly basis. There also isn't a requirement for us to release closed information into the public on a specified timeline. So the thought around this was leaving a little bit more flexibility on when items are coming forward into the public.
I'm just wondering from like a housekeeping perspective, how do we ensure? I mean, I get that that's not what's happening now, but like, how do we ensure that these, that there aren't items that should be made public that haven't been made public, that have gotten forgotten from like, you know, six months ago, a year ago, kind of thing? So where do we catch those items if we don't have something like this in place?
Staff can look at this again and look at some wording for council consideration if the decision, if you'd like to see more clarity on when motions would come forward.
Okay, thanks. I also had a question about Section 11.2, and I was wondering what constitutes officials from the Squamish Nation?
Through the Chair, we had some discussion on this too, about whether it should be Squamish Nation electoral officials. The thought was that Squamish Nation electoral officials might delegate members of staff to come and speak during some of our public hearing events, and we wanted to think of language that would allow official representatives from Squamish Nation without restricting who Squamish Nation delegated to come forward.
So, you know, because it's a very different social structure than, but so where do hereditary chiefs and elders come into that then? Would they be considered officials, or are we just talking about elected officials and representatives of that? And if we are, then I think there should be an extra category for elders and hereditary chiefs.
That is correct. It was just elected officials or delegates of elected officials. It wasn't taking into consider hereditary chiefs. Yeah.
That's, I have some comments, but that's what I have for questions.
All right, Counsel Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very much. So when I read bylaws, when I read procedures, I try to think about how might these things be manipulated? So some of these, my questions and comments might be, we hope that never happens, but, you know, obviously, what if it does? So in Section, I'll try to go from start to finish here. In Section 4.1, we have the language, this is when we define the, setting the Acting Mayor Schedule, I believe. The Appointment Deadline changed from that to on the first regular business meeting in November or as soon as practically possible. That language, as soon as practically possible, seems to be ambiguous. And of course, when we, when we're all working well together, that will work just fine. But if things start to go awry, the definition of practically possible might become unclear. Is there any way to tighten that language to be more prescriptive about the window which we define as practical?
Through the Chair, we can absolutely look at that. It is a fine balance between being too restrictive and being too ambiguous. So if council had a suggestion as to what they would like to define as the window, we can look at incorporating that.
If I can just add to, so in an election year, it wouldn't be possible to do it in that first week of November, and it would likely occur later in November, beginning of December, just because you're having that transition from one council to another. So it is intended to be sort of the objective, but also to allow for some flexibility in those types of circumstances.
Yeah, so I might suggest something, or as soon as practically possible, but before X date, the last day in December, right? Which is lots of time, but prevents absolute runaway abuse of a policy. The next, my next comment was on Section 6.6.
So can we actually start with questions for now, and then we'll come back around to comments? Is that okay?
Oh, yeah, sorry, these are sort of clarifying. Okay, I'll look through and see what ones are questions. Yeah.
I'll go to Counsel French while you're doing that.
Thanks, Chair. Okay. 9.12, under Voting at Meetings, the wording we see is, "When debate on a matter is closed and council is ready to vote, the Chair must put the proposed motion to a vote by asking council who is in favor and then who is opposed." So this suggests to me that procedurally, the Chair will not have the option to simply ask if anyone is opposed. So to be clear, does this section require the Chair to have all council members actually indicate how they are voting on a motion?
Through the Chair, yes, it does. That's correct.
Okay. Exactly the answer I was hoping for, because I just think that for people who are watching in the gallery, it's clear, and there's no way to misinterpret what has happened in a vote. In the Amendments Generally section, there's reference to moving to amend a motion, and there's no reference to another council member seconding the amendment ahead of a vote on the proposed amendment, which I believe is our current practice. So is that by design?
Through the Chair, that is actually a holdover from our current bylaw, and we can look at being more specific around and clarifying that.
Okay.
Sorry, that was 9.25, right?
I didn't make note of that section. Somewhere in nine. And then I have a question for my council colleagues to consider. I have concerns about the section titled Meeting Conduct. So this section starts on page 15 of the staff report. In 9.29, council members are instructed to not do three things: speak disrespectfully or disparagingly of others, use offensive language or symbols, and interrupt others. So everybody in all of our meetings, I believe, should have to abide by these conduct rules, not just members of council, and I'd like to see that specifically noted, and by everybody. So staff members, consultants, presenters, those in the gallery, anyone else of any description that's in the meeting. And 9.34 has wording indicating the Chair can expel or exclude a person from a council meeting if they're acting improperly, and I'm emphasizing improperly, in accordance with Section 133 of the Community Charter. So I was curious, what does one, Section 133 of the Community Charter say? Well, it reads, "One, if the person presiding at a council meeting considers that another person at the meeting is acting improperly, the person presiding may order that the person is expelled from the meeting. Two, if a person is expelled, does not leave the meeting, a peace officer may enforce the order under Section 1, as if it were a court order." So this wording in the Community Charter, in my opinion, not really helpful. It just, maybe in a perfect world, but in reality, not so much. So the word improperly, I find to be subjective, and I'd rather that it be removed. It works to simply indicate the Chair can exclude a person from a meeting if the way they're acting is inconsistent with the three things that are noted in 9.29 of the procedure bylaw, and not necessarily have to refer to Section 133 of the Community Charter, which I think doesn't really help. So, council, I'm just throwing it out there. Does anyone else share that concern of mine with the current proposed wording in the Meeting Conduct section? If you want to share thoughts, I'd love to hear them, and even potentially any proposed alternatives.
Thank you. It may have crossed the line into comment, I would say, but I'll go back. Do you have questions, Counsel Hamilton?
Yep, yep, I can come back to questions, so. And I'm, so, are you ready? Like, I'm sure your brains are bouncing around here with comment here, and then you're writing out here. Yeah, okay. So Section 5.8, this is regarding calling an electronic meeting. The proposed language states that the mayor, CAO, or corporate officer may decide to hold an electronic meeting or in a state of emergency. The language there wasn't clear to me. I think the intent is that any of those three people could call an electronic meeting. And I wasn't sure what the, or in the state of an emergency, what was the intent of that language? Yeah, I see why the emergency has to do with it, but.
To address the first portion through the Chair, yes, so the original language was the mayor or the Acting Mayor. The Acting Mayor has the same powers as the mayor in the mayor's absence, and we felt that we should add the CAO and the corporate officer to the list of people that have that ability to call an electronic meeting, just to ensure that we are covered. And the electronic meeting is advisable or during a state of local emergency. And this goes back to not including very much criteria over regarding what would constitute the requirement for electronic meeting, and leaving that more open-ended so that the district and council had the flexibility to make that determination depending on the situation, and/or during a state of local and provincial emergency is included as, because there is very clear criteria around those circumstances. Does that address your question?
I think I see the intent, but I'm not, it's not clear to me that the language here achieves that in the way that I read the line. So I think that, and another piece that I have some reservation over is, in the event that the mayor and the CAO have a disagreement about whether an electronic meeting should be held, whose authority gets, whose authority has authority? Which position has authority is not clear in this language.
I think the mayor would have the authority in that situation.
So I think that the, I think this captures, this may capture the spirit of what we're trying to do. The mayor or Acting Mayor should retain the ability to call an electronic meeting. And then in a state of emergency, the CAO or corporate officer may also take on that responsibility of calling an electronic meeting in the absence of the mayor or Acting Mayor. Does that capture the intent?
I think we could definitely work on the language around that, for sure.
And I have a question about Section 10.11. Flipping down to... This is the Delegation, Petitions and Delegations. Staff recommend adding the clause which addresses when delegations requested, requests unscheduled public attendance requests and open question period topics may be declined. The draft reads, they may, these, we may decline a request to appear if the matter is A, B, C, D, and my question is regarding J, that must be or has been considered by council in a closed meeting under the authority of Section 90 of the Community Charter. It's not clear to me how we can refuse a conversation based on the topic being enclosed if we're not able to acknowledge that a topic is being discussed enclosed. So it seems, there seems to be, I see why that's there, but I see a chicken and egg challenge of actually implementing it.
Well, I think we would know, A, if a delegation had put in a delegation request that the item had been enclosed or should be enclosed, and in that case, we would just deny the delegation. If they're appearing before council under unscheduled public attendance, I think it would be up to either the mayor, the CEO, the corporate officer to advise that this item should not be discussed at this moment as there's an ongoing, some language around how not to have that discussion at this time, but also not refer to it at a closed meeting, or that, you know, staff needs to take that away and gather some information and come back to council. It'll be a matter of sort of handling it on the fly at the moment, if that does happen.
Okay, now, I have the sense that there's a number of comments. I have a number of comments. Actually, I'll start with my question, and where I was going though, I'll let this go a little bit long, so we may have to come back for lunch long, and we may need another crack at this conversation, I'm not sure, but, so we'll see where we end up. The one question I had that wasn't already asked is the new advisory body definition, and that includes select and standing committees. And when I looked provincially, they use that same language. But I was struggling with that a little bit because select or standing committees can do things like sort of adminning rec programs or deciding. So there's some non-advisory things they can do. Just wanting to check if our intent is to sort of say, these shall only be advisory, we shall not use them for other things, or are we just adopting the provincial language, and they may actually go beyond advisory roles, or, just wondering if you can speak to that a bit?
Absolutely. The standing committees and select committees, their purpose is defined in the Community Charter. So regardless of the language we use in the procedure bylaw, when we establish those committees, they will still adhere to the requirements under the Community Charter. So the intent is not to limit their, the ability of the committees, it's to have a definition that encompasses all of our potential advisory bodies. So standing committees, select committees, as well as any special task forces that might have a little bit of a more limited scope. And this was a definition that is being used by other procedure bylaws in the province. So just for consistency purposes, that's what we went with.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we will turn to comments now, and we are sort of, at the time when we were supposed to be finished this portion. But again, I do want to give the time to have this discussion, so go to Mayor Herford, then Counsel Greenlaw.
Thank you. I think the, I was quite happy to see the addition of Section 10.11, which is some, adds some guidelines around requests appear as a delegation, and talks about unscheduled public attendance to open question period. I think where it physically sits, though, in the bylaw, is interesting. To me, it's more of a general guideline that applies to all the subsequent sort of categories, but it's sort of down at the tail end. So I wondered if there was a way to move... But it's sort of down at the tail end. So I wondered if there was a way to to move it. So as you're coming through and looking for opportunities for public comment, it was a bit more front and center as like setting the baseline. And this is just ordering of is the first piece of that. So I think that it, because it applies to then the subcategories of delegation and and unscheduled public attendance and and so on, and open question period. So um, same with the inclusion of you know, nine point three two, that language, I think um, is mentioned in um, where is it in? It as important from a behavior perspective. However, I think that um that as well could be included in the, in sort of the the first piece of how the public to sort of set those expectations. But specifically when it gets to the um to the what can be considered. You know, it, to me, it's at the, some of these are at the discretion of of council, um, like, and that piece is missing. So one request to appear as a delegation may be declined by the mayor. For a number of reasons, including these, and I think that piece is 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 lost, but this sort of sets an example, like it's still at a dis- at a discretion or if it doesn't or if it meets all these, but for some, but there's some other thing that I that the decide, the decision maker at that point thinks is a showstopper, the way I read this, it needs to advance. It's still not a, at the discretion of the of the mayor. Is that intentional that that's not? That that piece is lost? Or am I just reading this or something else that plays into it?
Through the chair, I think you might need to walk me through that one again. Sorry.
That's a totally fair response. Um, it just says in section, so ten point one one, uh, request to appear as a delegation may be declined by the mayor and request to appear under unscheduled public attendance and question period. Questions arising during open question period may be declined by council if the matter is. But it just seems to be exclusively those re- those reasons, not another reason that we're not thinking of here. So it makes me want to go through the rest of the alphabet and try to figure it out or add and try to add it in or add something that has, you know, at the discretion will of council, the discretion of the mayor in some instances or the discretion of council. Um, but these are the general categories. So I think we're close there, but I think there's a, it, to me, it just removes a discretion piece, which may be entirely appropriate to have to decline a um, a a delegation for some other thing that isn't captured here, but I like these general guidelines. And with that said, generally I like that, but item A here. So I guess the question, so that's the first piece, but the question was, was it intentional to remove that, the um the discretionary piece of this? This seems far more prescriptive. But it, which I, which I think is is helpful for general guidelines, but I still think that having a discretion piece could be important. Was that intentional to? Or is there some other item in this bylaw that allows that discretion?
Under ten point one B, we, there is a statement that says all delegation requests are approved at the discretion of the mayor or acting mayor. We could reframe the wording around that, that could be, are could be declined, uh, so that it does open up the parameters and isn't as restrictive as this.
Yeah, okay. And maybe the that sort of idea of setting the 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 tone for public participation. You know, if this, if ten point one one gets moved further up and maybe that can be highlighted, notwithstanding that, these are the other pieces. I do think that item A, though, outside the jurisdiction of District Squamish is really important. However, part of our role here is advocacy to other orders of of government. So I can think of instances where people are having challenges with healthcare and would like our support to ensure that you know, the province makes appropriate um, investments in healthcare or highway safety or, you know, these things that that are important. I still would like to have that open, but I do, but we've also, I know there's another side to that where we have been asked for for things that are very challenging for us that aren't that are so far removed from our areas of uh, responsibility and advocacy and general advocacy that it's problematic. But I think that A statement can be a little bit like broader to, you know. Yeah, advocacy for, you know, I don't know, there's something missing there for me in in item A in that, in that piece. And I don't quite know exactly what it is, but I think you can see that where I I think it's appropriate to hear from the public when they have a concern of a matter we're adjacent to, where we can advocate on their behalf. I think that's a fair expectation from the community.
So ten eleven does use the word may instead of shall or must. So whenever may is used, it does allow for the flexibility that you may or may not. So um, I think being too prescriptive might uh, lead to uh, trouble. Whereas um, being a little bit less prospective and having that may in there allows you to actually approve things that are on this list if you want to.
Okay. Perfect. That's um, that's helpful and um. Okay, I'll leave it. I think I'll leave it there. Um, yeah, I think I'm good there. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Greenlaw?
Thanks. Uh, through the chair, uh, for comments, I think seven point two should have some safeguard for making public the items in the clothes that should be made public. As Counselor Hamilton pointed out, like, we need to think kind of worst case scenarios and and though, and safeguarding democracy for the public, right? So we have a strong council now and staff and I'm very confident that everybody's upholding democracy as best we can, but that's not always the case. So if staff thinks that there should be changed, that the time or whatever to make it a more realistic goal for them, the whatever works, that's fine, but I do think there needs to be a safeguard there. For sections fifteen point two to fifteen point seven, I I personally find the rigid structure of our meetings quite stifling to constructive idea sharing. And I don't agree with removing the ability to resolve any meeting into a committee of the whole for specific matters. For the section eleven point two, I suspect that, I suspect that items B and C should be shifted down to add a section to include hereditary chiefs and elders, but perhaps staff could connect with somebody at the nation to ask what they think would be more culturally and functionally appropriate. Section nineteen point six, I am very happy to see that your worship is as an addressing of the mayor is being removed. Thank you very much for saving me from writing a uh, a motion to that effect. And uh, as to Counselor French's comments about conduct, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that extent extended to be anyone engaged in the meeting. And I wonder if there should be a connection between that portion and the code of conduct that we have. So that if anybody engaged in the meeting is in violation of the code of conduct, they may be expelled. I, yeah. Just opening that up for comments. Thanks for for all the, I'm sure it's exhilarating work.
Sorry, I just need clarification on one of the points. I think it was the committee of the whole, the reference to the committee of the whole point, the fifteen point two perhaps?
Yeah, for section fifteen point two to fifteen point seven, there there was something that was being removed that like any point could be dissolved into a committee of the whole during a meeting. And I I would like to see that protected. As opposed to removed.
Just uh, for clarity, I mean, we have not used that. What we would tend to do now, I think, is defer it to a committee of the whole and have a committee of the whole agenda and time discuss as opposed to stop the meeting and sort of sort of derail the current meeting, which is what this or language effectively allows. And so it would be more, we'd stick with our current process. It was like, hey, we need a deeper conversation about this. Let's, let's stop and defer this to a committee of the whole at a future date.
So keep that option and then just remove the ability to dissolve it in the moment. I don't know. I'm gonna stick with my comment. You guys don't have to agree.
Okay, I have Counselor Hamilton and Counselor French. Yeah, I'll repeat the thanks for for the work on this. This is, this is important, important stuff. How we conduct ourselves is important and how other people understand that we're expected to conduct ourselves is very important. Comment, uh, it, it seems that we might have use for something called a substantive motion. A motion that, you know, does something, have some impact on a bylaw or a policy or a procedure as opposed to motions, as opposed to, you know, functional motions, we allude to it in a few points. And it might be reasonable to to think about a definition of that so that it can be used repetitively. So a motion of substance needs to come to, from committee of the whole to a regular meeting for ratification. But obviously a motion to close a committee, the whole doesn't have to come for ratification at a regular meeting. So a suggestion, comment there. Regarding the moving committee of the whole recommendations to the consent agenda. I have some concern that we're eroding, but by simply putting motions of substance from the committee of the whole into the consent agenda. We're eroding the function of the committee of the whole as a space for discussion, conversation and feedback and making it another council meeting that just happens to get ratified. So the notion of, so in in my mind, I think we should be moving more in the direction of the committee of the whole as being a point of discussion and conversation and feedback. And then the point of debate should still remain the council meeting. Meaning that once the point has been discussed or the topic has been understood by all counselors, we can, we still have the opportunity to come to the council meeting for the explicit structured debate on the matter. So that's just a reservation on the direction of moving a committee of the whole towards, you know, a commit, a council meeting every Tuesday. That just happens, we just ratify what we said in the committee of the whole at some regular meeting. The next section.
Can I just interrupt there?
Yep.
So a council member can remove anything from the consent agenda. This was just meant to be in there for efficiency purposes. Typically, it's feedback provided at the committee of the whole meetings, but sometimes there are items that go forward and and the committee does debate them and vote on whether or not they want council to approve or not approve it. I think it was just intended to sort of eliminate that double debate and create some time efficiencies in the meeting. So that's just a little bit of sort of the context of that.
Yeah, I absolutely see where the motivation for it. It's I think my reservation, and I see the efficiency, and there are many things that we discuss in count, committee of the whole that don't need to be redebated. But I think, I don't think that should be the default. I think our default should be moving more towards the committee of the whole being a conversation, a discussion for information, for expressing concerns and point of view. And then the council meeting being that decision, remaining that, keeping the space in the council meeting for the decision point. As opposed to moving the decision point to the committee of the whole. This, this moves in the direction of moving the decision point to the committee of the whole. I think we should work towards maintaining the decision point as a council meeting.
So just for clarity, are you saying that the committee should not forward any recommendations to council and any decisions should go to council instead of committee? Like if a staff is bringing forward a report to committee of the whole that might have a recommendation in it that needs to be ratified by council, you're saying that that should instead just go straight to council and not to committee?
Ideally, I, I, that's the direction I think we should move. I I'm not, I wouldn't be prescriptive in our procedures by law that we have to go in that direction. But by saying that decisions get, motions get passed in committee of the whole and simply appear on the consent agenda by default within the council meeting, we're in my, I have a concern that we're moving too far in the direction of the committee of the whole being the meeting where decisions are made and the regular meeting being just a formality. And I think we need to maintain the regular council meeting as a point of debate um, and decision.
So in uh, ideally, you would like to see that they're not on the consent agenda. They actually appear in a different part. Okay.
This may be a point where we have some discussion because I have a different perspective maybe. And so there may be some different perspectives on this one.
It's a good thing we're in a committee of the whole to have a discussion. Don't make a decision. Um, and I think right, there was one more, um, which was in section nine fourteen to nine twenty-four. Where we talk about when a, when a motion comes up that is contrary to the rules of council or outside of the authority. And the proposal was to remove the responsibility or the ability of the chair to not call the question. Yeah. I don't know, right, a member of council does not have the authority to not call a question. It's only the chair who has the authority to not call a question. So I think that piece might be important. Without that piece, the chair or a member of council can call a question. But no member of council can refuse the calling of a question. That's the om, the chair is the one that has that authority.
So I can just um, reiterate what it is you're asking?
Yep. So uh, clause ten twenty of bylaw twenty ninety-nine. Has whenever the chair is of the opinion that a motion offered to council is contrary to the rules of council or relates to matters outside the authority of council, he or she must inform the council immediately, giving reasons and refuse to accept the motion subject to a resolution. Subject to a resolution to the contrary by the council. The chair is the only one who has the authority to refuse to an accept, to refuse to accept a motion. If a discussion happens outside of the um, rules of council, none of us, and counselors do not have the authority to not have the question called. It's only the chair that has that authority. We have the authority to call a question. We can call a question, but we can't refuse a question being called. And so by taking this out, a member of council will be allowed to call a question that is contrary to the rules of council.
Our procedure by law actually follows Robert's Rules of Order is is the parliamentary procedure that we use and that is in parliamentary procedure typically that the chair would be the one to call a motion out of order. So we don't have everything in the bylaw that is reflective of what's in Robert's Rules of Order, but if you feel like that should be kept in for clarity, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, it, to me, it's an important piece where the the chair has some additional responsibility to see that things don't go out of, out of bounds. That's it. Thanks very much. Hey, Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. So I'm generally satisfied with what I see in the proposed changes to the procedure by law. Clearly thoughtful consideration went into the project and and the report. So I'll start with the committee of the whole um, ratification issue. Uh, I'm, I align with staff on this one respectfully, Counselor Hamilton. I I just don't see the advantages of going the route that you'd prefer us to take. My experience of having um, covered council meetings dating back to nineteen ninety. It, in my opinion, just best belongs in the consent agenda and absolutely, when there is desire amongst council to have um, another debate, if if that's the scenario or continue the debate or introduce new and different information we didn't have in the committee of the whole, great, pull it out of the consent agenda and let's have at it. Just from my experience, I think that our meetings would be more efficient and um, generally move smoother if that is in the consent portion. And so just following up on my earlier thoughts about the section that I have concerns with. I definitely would like to see revised wording around um, meeting conduct um, section. The, for me, the subjectivity, it just needs to be removed because I think expulsion from a meeting should take place after somebody has been warned once or more than once that how they're behaving, how they're being is disruptive and not productive. And and I'd rather see very precise language around that instead of what we currently have, that I think is a little bit more subjective. I think it's a little bit more subjective. And on councillor Hamilton's concern about the phrase practically possible, I agree with that. I think that needs to be adjusted and we might look at maintaining the November reference and then also adding a deadline of December the 15th. And then, so in preparing for this discussion, one of the lenses that I, I really leaned on heavily is what's happening right now in some of the other council chambers around this province. And this procedure by law is really important to maintaining decorum and paving the way for a council to work effectively together. I can't emphasize that enough. This piece of legislation is super important to all of that. Because when I see what the tactics that are being used in some of the communities around the province, it's very much related to these procedure bylaws and people finding ways around them. Abusing them and stretching interpretations of the language. So that's why I'm thinking that more precise language is better than loose language in the procedure by law. Thanks Chair.
Thank you. And I, I misjudged this topic. I thought might be a quick and easy one, but as I got into it and realized all the, the importance of it and some of the philosophical implications too, I thought, wow, this is a big topic. So I have a few comments, I'll try and get through them quickly. The one, it, it talks in a few places about the mayor gets side or failing that the acting mayor. But we have a whole sort of process about acting, acting, acting and that. And I think we need to be very careful to make sure that that's always the case in all these references. And one place in particular that it jumped out at me and we had it, it was mentioned briefly in the discussion. I don't think there should be a case where staff is ever calling a council meeting. I, I think, you know, if the mayor, acting mayor is unavailable, the CIO calls the acting, acting mayor and the acting, acting mayor. And they're just, I, I think that's an important distinction. I, in, in terms of the committee of the whole, I understand and appreciate some of the clarity we're trying to get to with what things need to get ratified versus not. In my opinion, I would say nothing is formal until it's ratified at a, at a public meeting. So I wouldn't have the different, like these kinds, kinds of resolutions can be made and they're, they're formal at a committee of the whole. I, I, I don't, I think that muddies the waters. I would, I would say any council direction needs to be formally ratified. You know, staff can read the room and have an understanding and take action they feel comfortable with. But I think it's not official till council says it at a council meeting. And to that point though, I, I do think for efficiency, it makes sense by default to put committee of the whole decisions on a consent agenda and for us to have the freedom to pull it. There's no debate on pulling an item. So if, if something requires more work, then, then we can pull it, I think. I, I did, yeah, I, I've chaired remotely a couple of times. And I take the point about if there are people in the room. Personally, I would prefer a bit more flexibility in this and leave it to the group or maybe the, the mayor or the, you know, to, to make the final call if there's a problem. I do think to the degree we can encourage people, even if they've got a cold or whatever, to be able to chair and have that ability, I think is, is worthwhile. Just personal feeling on that one. The electronic participation and venue. I want to be consistent with the rules we have, but I hope that, and that we are really working hard. It shouldn't be a huge technical challenge to, to allow electronic participation to other venues. And maybe we just pick one venue. So that's like, that has to come in our budget in the next couple of years that we can do electronic participation in Brendan Park. I, I, when I saw the language here, I just didn't want to head down the path of like, oh, well, we'll just do Brendan Park. We never have to worry about electronic participation. I don't think that's the route we want to go. Like in the short term, that's maybe where we are. But we want to be able to have meetings there and have the electronic participation. And so as long as that's our goal, having this change in the short term is okay. But yeah, I wanted to make that comment. Just the, the release around closed information. Sometimes it seems there are cases where we're waiting on a couple of contracts or agreements to be signed. And as soon as that's done, we're happy to go for it to go public as soon as it's, you know, staff can do it. And so we'd like the ability to make that kind of resolution, I think. So just however we write this, as long as that sort of thing is still possible. Personally, I, I think for efficiency, if we have the ability to just check for opposition rather than enumerate approval, I, I like the efficiency there, but you know, that's not a, a hill to die on for me. Yeah, I, I guess some of the, I, I appreciated having in terms of delegations and especially when it's unscheduled delegations, some guidance about what sorts of things are considered or not is good. I'm not sure we've quite got the list nailed. I think when I look at UBCM resolutions, there's a whole bunch of resolutions about things outside of our jurisdiction. And so for me, the word, having the word may there isn't enough. I think we do want to be able to consider those. And, and there's a whole philosophical topic because some people feel that local government should just not deal with anything that's outside and, and that's it. I think you're always going to have different philosophies there. And so I personally, I think we should leave that a bit more open and, and leave it to the body to decide. And, you know, I, I did feel too that there are cases where what we're thinking is this is an important discussion, but it's more appropriate for a committee of the whole. And I, I didn't feel like there's enough room in the guidance there to sort of have that piece. And so maybe there's some language around, you know, when it's more appropriate for a committee of the whole. That might be another option to not have the delegation there and then. So just something around there. Agree with the comments about we probably, given our recent practice, want to include CMs or chiefs and elders in who we consider unofficial. And I also wondered about Nshkai and their reps and where they fall into this sort of thing. And so having a bit of conversation with Squamish Nation might, might be worthwhile. The final thing is my long list. Some of the changes around notice of emotion. I, I'm not entirely comfortable with the idea of the mayor and CIO sort of getting the notice of motion when it's more practical. I, I sort of feel like the whole point of this is, is when it's to protect the minority. And I think it's up to the, the councillor that's struggling, that needs to put something forth in note of, of motion to craft their motion such that it is achievable, such that, you know, part of the motion can be to come back once more research has been done or whatever, as opposed to sort of out of the gate, allowing the mayor or the CIO to possibly slow roll something. So I guess that was my, my feeling there. Again, not a concern I have at the moment, but just looking to a council that's not proceeding well. So I guess in that long list of feedback, is there anything that, Mayor Herford, do you want to jump in?
Sorry, I just wanted to chime in on a couple of things where I've heard different opinions just to. The, the consent agenda piece, the committee of the whole recommendations going on the consent agenda, I think is something that I, I suggested because we had seen actually, it just seemed like an extra step that we'd been doing repeatedly. I do, I do like, so I'm supportive of the, of that direction. I do think that similar to, if we receive correspondence that someone knows they'd like to pull. If we had that notice in advance, we could put it, could change where it sits on the agenda. So it's referred from the agenda, from the consent agenda and just sit there. So we know that we're going to come back to whatever that, that topic is. And, and I think that this is important to, adjacent to this is the, the concept of staff being able to action things when we stand up from committee of the whole, which is one of the other pieces here. And I think it's really important they can do that. It's not, we don't need to wait for the next, it's already a challenge to get onto an agenda. And then we're going to need to ratify something at a next regular or we're going to need to create another special so that staff can go and do advance something that we've discussed at committee of the whole. So I think that it is important to understand what the definition of substantive, or I forget what the wording was there. I think it's important to have those definitions there, but I don't think that every piece needs to come to committee of the whole, except for the pieces or out of committee of the whole to be ratified, except for in those explicit cases where that needs to happen for the action to sort of, for it to be actionable. But I'd hate to add another week or more delay in, in advancing any one item because it needs to come for a ceremonial, in a, in a lot of cases, approval at a, at the, at a regular. I think the, I also appreciate the as soon as practical language, but just the need for that, but putting a hard deadline, I think is, is really, you know, but no later than. And I hear December 15th, December sometime, I don't know, something that's, something that's reasonable there, I think is, is helpful as well. And I would like to, and I suggest that we refer to the particular piece around the Squamish Nation, having Squamish Nation representatives speak to the Squamish Nation to see what, what language they, I know that they say that, I've heard from the nation that City of Vancouver has a practice. I don't know what that, I don't know what that is, but it, it'd be interesting to see. You know, if there's lessons learned from that, what the particular language is. And, and that's where I'd like to see the input coming on that particular, on that particular piece. And I'm happy to, in, conceptually, I'm happy to see it there, but I'd like to understand what that really, what they'd like that to, to look like for our consideration. I'm going to leave that there.
Okay, so with that, is there particular areas that staff would like more clarity on? Do we want to sort of come back with another draft or how do we, what does staff feel like here?
I suppose we've heard from both sides about leaving committee of the whole and advisory body recommendations in the consent agenda. It looks like the majority would like to leave it in the consent agenda, but I'm not sure if you want to vote on that or do a straw poll.
Sure. Why don't we do that, just to make it more clear? So who would like, so I will move that committee of the whole items to be ratified, show up in the consent agenda by default of the next regular or special meeting. Seconded by the mayor, any discussion for the discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And opposed, councillor Greenlaw and Hamilton oppose, motion carries. Okay. Mayor Herford?
I'm going to move the, I'm going to move the staff recommendation. It's a second, I'm just going to read this to provide feedback. So that staff incorporate the feedback heard at the meeting today and bring, and bring forward the, the, and then so it'd be, item one would be that, that the committee advised staff to incorporate the feedback heard today into development of bylaw three, zero, three, two, 2024. And direct staff to bring forward a regular business meeting, the proposed District of Squamish Council procedure by law for consideration of first three readings.
So just before I enter, I just want to double check though, the staff, is there any pieces in the discussion that you think were a bit divided on still that you would like clarity on?
I, I didn't feel like there was defensiveness on any of the other items.
Okay, so do we have a second or councillor French seconds? Any, Mayor Herford?
Yeah, thank you. I think we've, we've spoken on, on this a fair bit, so I won't go through the, the points that we've made already, but I, I just wanted to recognize the work that's gone into this. I know over my time at, at this table, working with our existing bylaw, you know, we've made suggestions and, and oh, wow, this piece feels a bit awkward and, and I see that really reflected here. So thank you for tracking that and for taking this on. This is a big and important piece. I really appreciate councillor French's comments around, you know, how this could be and how this is playing out in other, in other areas. I think it's important to do our very best to put ourselves into that position of like, well, what, what could be done with this? If you're coming at it from that different angle that is thankfully unfamiliar to, to us here in this, in this room. And I really appreciate the sort of incorporating what has been common practice of having the acting mayor chair committee of the holes and so on. These are things that fell into, you know, just at discretion of, of, of the mayor. But I really think it, it is very beneficial for, for all of us to have that experience. I know it gave me some confidence to be able to come forward and, and advance to the position that I have, I have now. So I think it's really critical that that's actually in there. And I know that doesn't exist in, in many places and I'm, I'm quite proud to have that piece about to be sort of codified in our, in our procedure. So thank you for that piece as well. And yeah, thank you for all the work. Look forward to seeing the next draft.
Any further comments? I'll just add, yeah, again, thank you at watching other councils. You could easily go down a rabbit hole of trying to protect every possible loophole. And, and so it's, it's trying to find that balance and being very thankful that we haven't had to rely on, you know, we've been able to act in good faith and, and good cooperation, which has been one of the highlights of being part of this council. I would say for me, I, I just still do have some discomfort about introducing the idea of committee of the whole is a place for formal resolutions. Sometimes there are certain kinds. And I guess keeping that very clear for both us and the public, I wonder if there's an alternative like a, just a easy automatic follow on, you know, formal special meeting. Like can we have really low barrier and just say these three things that we want to give direction on? We don't want to wait another week. Can we just formalize those? Or is there another way to make it more clear? And, and you know, maybe we'll get to like, there's a clear classification. These kinds of things can happen in the committee of the whole and they're formal and these ones aren't. And it's just as long as we can find a very clear way to wade through that, I think that's the, the main objective. So with that, I will conclude this discussion. Oh, we need a vote. I'm forgetting the vote. So all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. I will call a recess. I'm going to say we will come back at 1:30. So I'm going to cut off 15 minutes and we will still be half hour late. So let's come back from at 1:30 and try and eat quickly and thank you everyone. So let's come back from at one thirty and try and eat quickly, and thank you, everyone.
Okay, welcome back everyone. Uh, we are back to the committee of the whole for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Um, if you hear disembodied voice, it is councillor Peddingle. I am still chairing the meeting, but my computer is rebooting and updating, so I have no video, but I am here chairing the meeting. Uh, I will turn it over to Ms. Wells now, our director of corporate administration to talk about the council correspondence pro- uh, policy.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, good afternoon, council. My name is Carrie Wells and Director of Corporate Administration. I'm here today to present to you the revised correspondence policy for your consideration and feedback. So to start, a little bit of background, uh, the policy was first adopted in 2010. It was subsequently amended 2012, 2019, and most recently in 2021. The current amendments are intended to formalize current practices, provide greater consistency and transparency, and streamline communications and ensure timely responses to the public where applicable. The accompanying procedures provide clarity for council and guidance to staff and understanding staff responsibilities in relation to distributing, tracking, and responding to correspondence. I have some highlights of the policy. I've summarized here on the next few slides. Uh, the new policy classifies correspondence into a number of different buckets, including operational matters. So these would be emails or correspondence received or sent to council that involve operational matters, service requests, complaints, suggestions, opinions, those types of things. Those would typically be forwarded to staff for consideration response. Uh, another classification of correspondence are upcoming agenda items. So this would relate to land use applications or other matters that are going to council for public input. Perhaps, uh, staff is already working on a staff report about an issue that's before the community. Um, so those would be directed to the appropriate staff person in charge of the file. Uh, other classifications of correspondence, updates and information from other levels of government and community groups that are of interest to the general public. This would include your, um, MLA, MP news letters, uh, correspondence from the UBCM, LGMA, those types of things. Those are typically put on the council agenda under consent items as, as is currently done. Uh, informal petitions and form letters. So informal petitions are petitions that don't fall under the statutory requirements. Um, they might be a petition of six people that somebody has submitted because they want a new, um, bike lane built or something like that. Uh, form letters are the letters that many of you have seen in relation to, um, certain public hearings or other matters, uh, before council. And the last one is a new addition is request for letters of support and, um, especially interested to hear, uh, councils or committees' feedback on that. So those are the current classifications. Sorry, just wondering what screen to look at here. Uh, routing of correspondence, so the classification of correspondence will, will dictate how that correspondence is rooted. Uh, there has been a revised automated response acknowledging, acknowledging receipt and if, and how correspondence will be directed when, uh, correspondence is sent to the council@squamish.ca email address. Uh, in addition to the categories of correspondence noted in the previous slide, the policy also provides for how delegation requests, proclamation requests, and flag raising requests will be handled. Uh, format and content of correspondence, the policy, um, dictates that, uh, writers must include their name and contact information. We don't acknowledge anonymous correspondence for a vi- variety of reasons. Um, I mean, it can still be received by council, but there won't be a response, obviously, as we don't have the writer's, um, name or contact information. Uh, there is a definite new definition for vexatious and/or persistent correspondence included in the policy. And the policy identifies the type of content deemed inappropriate and how it will be handled. Request for letters of support, um, this is intended to streamline processes and ensure efficient use of time at council meetings. Sets the criteria to be met in order for the mayor to issue a letter of support on behalf of council in the district. Uh, the writer must, uh, send in such a request, minimum of two weeks notice prior to the date the letter of support is needed. Uh, oftentimes we'll receive it a few days before, a day before. It doesn't give staff enough time to turn, turn around, um, that consulting with council or consulting with the mayor. And any letters of support would obviously be distributed to all of council via the council mail portal. Uh, there are accompanying procedures now to the council policy uh, that outline who the correspondence will be distributed to based on its content and classification, who correspondence is assigned to, again, based on its content and classification, and how the correspondence is to be actioned. Uh, there's also a table included to provide an easy reference for staff. I'm sure you can't actually read that because it's pretty small, but, um, it is in your agenda packages. And the staff recommendation is that the committee provide feedback on the draft updated council correspondence policy and direct staff to bring forward the draft policy incorporating the committee's feedback to a future regular council meeting. So happy to take any questions and feedback.
Hey, councillor Hamilton? Thanks very much. Um, I, this is something since starting at council this term. Um, I've thought this is something that, uh, we can certainly work on and improve upon. So I'm glad to see this coming to the table. First is a simple question, the four or more rule, if there's four or more councillors included. Does that come from, it, it, that sounds to me like it's something that comes from an overarching, the community charter or the local government. Is that a council directive? Or is that, uh, it's not coming from some overarching, uh, authority?
Yeah, that's not a legislated requirement. It was in the, um, existing, um, correspondence policy. So it was just carried over and it, it makes sense since it's, that's a majority of council.
Yeah, thanks. I, I see the logic for it. I wanted to, to clearly understand the origin of it. Uh, that's great. Um, the when staff, and now on a different topic, when staff, in the procedures policy, when staff respond, um, to, uh, email correspondence, uh, they don't respond to council at. They will include their response into the council mail, um, tracker, uh, as opposed to emailing to council at. I find the council mail tracker, the way we have it, quite difficult to navigate. To, if I, if there's an issue that a citizen has brought up and I was expecting a staff response and two weeks later I might need to come and look for it, I, I find it rather difficult. Is there a reason why, uh, we wouldn't use just a response to council at as opposed to the current, uh, mail, council mail folder?
Um, I think right now it's being done inconsistently. You are receiving some responses and perhaps not others. So the policy lays out that staff will respond to the writer, um, but not CC council. But council will also receive, uh, a copy of the response at the at council or the squan- council@squamish.ca email address. So that is part of the new policy. And then they will link their response to the original, uh, correspondence in the mail portal.
Okay, so I didn't understand that from the policy. And so let me just clarify what I think I heard. So staff will respond to the, um, original email just to the respondent. In addition to that response, they will forward the response to council@squamish.ca. So we will see all staff responses to council at emails in the council@squamish email thread.
Correct.
Fantastic. Great. Um, that's great. I think that's the, that's, I think that's a, um, that would help me, um, clearly see what's been responded to, how it's been responded to, so that I know whether I want to follow something up. Uh, aside from, from staff. That's great. Thank you. Um, and there's a in point three, I'm not sure what my numbers in my notes refer to here. Um, it speaks about automated response to correspondence. Uh, and it wasn't clear to me how an automated response, um, would be determining the nature of the correspondence. So what do we sort of, what do we mean by an automated response? Do we mean we have received this email? Or does it mean we've received this email and here's how it's been directed?
So, uh, staff just recently updated the automated reply and, um, I have it here. Uh, rather than reading the entire thing out, though I could send it to each of you so that you can see it before the policy comes back. Um, it does, it does thank them for writing. It talks about if it's an emergency, contact this person. Um, it talks about where to redirect their email if it's related to a service request, things like that. So it doesn't, it doesn't itself, obviously, it's not AI, it doesn't determine what the, what the question is, but it provides, um, a number of other avenues. If the writer is, you know, looking to make a bylaw complaint, please submit your bylaw complaint this way, um, that sort of thing.
And would we be leaving it, so if it is a bylaw complaint, um, would we be leaving it to that automated response? And the, and the respondent to read it and say, okay, no, this has to go to bylaw? Or would, would we be following on with that automated response and say, this is a bylaw? Please forward your question to bylaw.
Uh, so staff would still upload that to the council mail portal and assign it to bylaws just to be sure that they were covered.
Great, thanks. And I'll hold it there for anybody else with questions.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands, so continue if you'd like.
Um, okay. There are several points that the, um, council, in order to, to, uh, bring something forward, to bring a correspondence forward, uh, council is to, uh, required to make a request to the corporate officer. Um, do we have a generic email for corporate officer? Um, so that we don't need to know who's on vacation when, um, because that's sometimes difficult to keep track of. Uh, and it's, it would be unfortunate if we sent an email, uh, to you when you're on vacation and it didn't come through in time, right? Do we have a generic email for that?
Or something to tell people who they should contact in my absence, but, but we can look up into creating a corporate officer email address. There is a legislative services email address already, um, so that could be used as well.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of ways to simplify, um, count, council asks, you know, forwarding it to the right person. Um, on, in terms of, uh, responses to persistent or abusive correspondence. Our policy, the, the policy suggestion is that we just don't respond to it. Uh, I think that that may cause additional frustration, uh, from people who may be resp- emailing and not actually understanding that their language is abusive. Let's, let's imagine a world where somebody doesn't understand that their language is abusive and inappropriate. Is there a way that we could suggest, uh, a response that says, we, we are not going to respond to this mail, this correspondence, until it's not abusive? So that we can tell people how they can correspond with us as opposed to simply refusing to correspond with them? Do you think there's scope for that?
Uh, yeah, so there's two different categories there. There's the persistent and vexatious, which is a little bit, um, specific to people that continuously, uh, email. And there's a few instances of that. So those people would already be aware that, um, staff is, has done all that they can and that any future communications would either be directed to a specific person or would not be responded to at all. Um, in the other instance where perhaps a writer has just, uh, sent in a piece of correspondence where they're not happy and they're, you know, being offensive or problematic. Um, yes, I think in that instance, we could just say to them, due to the nature and language used in your correspondence, we will not be responding to this. If you'd like to rewrite and resubmit, yeah, we could add that in.
Yeah, I, I think that would go along with the, uh, our mentality of wanting to educate as opposed to just shut down communication. And my last question. And my last question. Do we have? A mechanism for monitoring? Our correspondence, meaning how? How long, how many correspondence do we have that don't get responded to? I know that's a difficult thing to do because some, a form letter should, we don't typically respond to those and I don't think we should. Whereas an email specifically from a member of the community asking something, it's hard for me to track whether, how many of those have been responded to. And how many have not been responded to. Do we have a mechanism for monitoring our responses?
Well, the council mail portal provides information on. A, where the correspondence was directed, if it was added to an agenda or a staff response was required. So in the council mail portal, you, a person could go through that to see which ones have been provided or response. I'd have to check with the actual system to see if there's a way to run any reports. As far as I know, at the moment. It doesn't have that capability, but maybe it is a capability that could be built into it, something we'd have to look into.
Yeah, I think I would appreciate knowing. I sometimes get comments from members of the community that say, oh, I emailed and I didn't receive a response. And I'd like to know how often that happens. To, to, to be able to see how mu, if we need to improve in that, in that area. Thanks.
Okay, counsel, any comments before we entertain a motion? Okay, I have a couple I'll start off with then. So just nine. Six, nine, although I have nine eighty minus for some reason, but MLA and MP correspondence. Going on to consent agenda, I, I think makes sense. But one thing we, I think ran into is, is it needs to be nonpartisan. And I think. There's provincial and federal rules about that as well, but when we get things that aren't compliant, I, I don't think in that case it should go on our consent agenda. So I, I don't know if we need a caveat formally in this policy, but maybe to make that clear is the one thing. The other piece, and I struggled with this a bit, and it's the letters of support, no longer needing to come to council. And, you know, I think for the last six years I've been on council. Would have wished the mayor could have just done the letter of support because it was something very simple that we all would have agreed with, a, a non-issue. But if you think of the criteria proposed, a not-for-profit or single individual, you could imagine a not-for-profit wanting us to. Fully endorse all LNG or the opposite, fully reject all of it. And, and I don't know for things like that. We'd want just the mayor making that decision on their own. Like a lot of things could be very political. And, and so I have some hesitation about whether letters of support. I, I think we, we either need more criteria or I think maybe it does need to stay a council decision personally. Be curious to hear my colleagues on that one.
Mayor Herford.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this one. I, I thought this one was interesting as well. And I think. There's some places where. You know, like the general need for, for daycare or, or something like this, where there's an established need and it's reflected in. Various policies in the, in the municipality. I'd like to capture that somewhere here. I feel like that was actually a little, a little, a little open. But the ones that are, you know, aligned with things that are in, you know, OCP objectives or, or our strat plan or. Other things I think are, there are ones that are slam dunks and I'd love, I'd like the ability to. To do, to provide those without coming to, to council. It's, it's interesting where it says the mayor may issue a letter of support on behalf of council, so long as the proposed initiative or matter does not require. Council resolution, which I'm assuming would be an action, not the resolution to send the letter. And meets the following criteria. So I think that maybe adding a criteria. In here that is, you know, aligns with. Policy or, or direction or something like that, it would be. Totally worthwhile just as a, as a, as a safeguard. And then those ones could go through a process if, of coming to, coming to council. Is that, something like that seem, seem?
Yeah, we can, I can tighten up the language there. And just to be clear, the council resolution is some. Granting organizations actually require a council resolution. So that was what was meant by that. And I can clarify that more in. When I bring it back. But yeah, so a pre-established need in the community aligns with council policy or strategic planning.
Yeah, I think if it aligns with district, district po, policy. And then, and include the council strategic plan in that sort of umbrella, then we know that there's a need for. I can think of all sorts of policy that, that highlights the need for affordable housing. So I'd be quite comfortable writing a letter of support that. Also didn't deviate outside of what our policy says, which is one of the things as well. And maybe something similar with. You know, daycare. I can think of these other places where it would, where it would apply. So. And then, I think that would just put some guardrails on it, which I think gets at your, at your point, Counselor Fennigill. Around if we don't have policy on, on something or, or a, or a direction, like if it's a pure political thing that needs to come to council to see if we want to. Participate in whatever position, if want to take whatever position we're being asked for. Does that get at what you're thinking?
Well, maybe. I may play devil's advocate, but maybe Counselor Hamilton will do it for me, so.
Well, what, I do that? Suggested potential resolution. I too am a little bit uncomfortable with the notion of the mayor issuing a letter of support. On behalf of council without council's knowledge of the, of the content of the letter. I, I agree that there are lots of places where it's reasonable and appropriate. I also see lots of places where it could perhaps be. Misconstrued or misinterpreted. And so I'm wondering if it can be simply the mayor may issue a later, a letter of support. Remove on behalf of council, so long as the proposed initiative or matter does not require council resolution. Does that resolve anything?
Not seeing a seconder at this point. Oh, okay, okay. Mayor Herford?
Let me let others chime in first. I don't think this is, this is.
Counsel French?
Yeah, thanks Chair for, first of all, putting this in front of us and thanks for your thoughts. I, I'm finding myself aligning quite nicely with what Counselor Hamilton had to say. And I, you know, I, I don't worry about this council. I worry about. Those who will sit in these chairs next and seeing what's happening in some of the other communities around British Columbia. It's very real and it's very possible. And it's this kind of policy that helps to protect and ensure that. Councils don't get dysfunctional. So I like Counselor Hamilton's thoughts and solution on it.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
So basically, item twenty-one, under request for letter of support currently reads, the mayor may issue a letter of support. On behalf of council. And then it continues. And I, my proposal would be just to remove on behalf of council. So that allows the mayor to speak on behalf of themselves and put a letter of support on their behalf, but not on council's behalf.
Okay, Mayor Herford?
I, I understand where everyone's. Or sort of where this sort of line of thought comes from. And however. I think it's the reason that the mayor is being asked because the mayor represents council. And that's what the role is. So I can think of all manner of communications we have. We have media inquiries that all come through. The mayor's office to sign off on, yes, that's a, a fine piece of communication. Yes, that, that, you know, matches our understanding. That matches our policy and all the rest of it before we provide a response, whether it's a media response or in this case a letter. So to me, this falls into same, the similar category. And I would look for us to give the, the mayor, whoever happens to be sitting in that seat. The authority to respond on behalf of council, because that's what is hap, is being asked of here. And I think in order to do that, to address your concerns, I believe it needs to be. A guardrail added into some like, you know, item six that says that matches, that doesn't exist yet. A proposed item six that would say something about, you know. Aligning with existing policy and so on. So then we can, then the mayor is, is empowered to articulate what existing policy is. And how that relates to the, the ask of the, of the. Whoever's, whoever's making that ask. I, I think that's where, where it lives because I, I don't think you want to. Yeah, I see risk in, well, that's the mayor's opinion. That's not our opinion. And that's not, we're, we're not, this isn't space for that. So I think we should really try to constrain it or provide better guidelines rather than to take the spokesperson. Piece out of the equation, which is what I'm seeing there. So I hear the concern, but I think it could be, it's better addressed in other ways. So that person has something that's approved by council. Otherwise, the important things that are timely and all the rest of it are likely to just have to come to us anyways. And this isn't going to actually. Speed up the process.
And I'm going to interject and just throw another little piece in this. I, I tend to agree that. You know, the mayor does speak on behalf of the organization and it gets very tricky, I think, for the public to separate that. So. Have some hesitation there. And I think adding in some, some wording about consistency with policy and so on is. A good step. And, and I think, but I wonder if, if there's also just some language that, you know. Where the mayor understands to a reasonable degree, this thing is generally supportable by council. Or something in that ballpark. And, and I just think, you know, policy only, and I'm bringing it to LNG because it's been a contentious topic. And I, I think we can understand even in a functional council where there's disagreement, but we have clear policy on GHD targets and so on in our OCP. And so I think a mayor might feel they have policy direction to go a particular way. But I expect there are people around this table that would still want to have a debate before such a letter was endorsed or not. And, and so that's where, you know, even when the policy piece is there, it's still a little bit gray. And, and, and over the last six years, again, there's been a bunch of, of letters of support that was just a, a big obstruction. And it was very obvious that these should go and could go, but we added kind of weeks of delay to making this happen. And so I'm not sure quite how to navigate that. Counselor Hamilton?
Another suggestion on navigating it. I certainly see the point on the mayor acting as the, the spokesperson versus the acting on their own. And that's an important aspect that I, I do agree we need to protect, that the mayor does generally speak on behalf of council policy. Not of their own individual will, in a general sense. So point twenty-five says a copy of any letters of support processed under this policy. And the accompanying request will be distributed to the council via the council mail portal. I'm not sure about the rest of council, but I do not routinely check the council mail portal for information. And so I see that as a very easy way to, for us to lose track of what's been supported. So if we do go ahead with this, I would like to see that the letters of support are at minimum. Sent to council@squamish.ca because we all routinely monitor that email. And if possible, or if reasonable, that all letters of support appear in the correspondence part. Of the, of council agendas. I'm not sure if that's appropriate. There may be some letters of support which are not appropriate for council. Agendas, but if they are, that would be a, a great spot where if somebody disagrees, they can pull it and have a conversation.
Mayor Herford?
Yeah, I'm just thinking this thing through as best, as best I can. And I, I think that having the ability to. Reply is, is important. We, you know, these things sometimes come up faster than we, than we'd like. And the vast majority of them are sort of very supportable. I, I like the suggestion of, of having. The letters provided appear on a, on an agenda, court, maybe under correspondence or. Other, as a safe, as a, as a sort of a safety mechanism. Because if, let's just say the, the mayor decides to provide a letter that was over whatever that line is. And that line might be different for, for everybody. There's the, the, knowing that that's going to appear on an agenda. And then could be pulled, debated and council could direct another action, I think is a very strong deterrent for whoever's in that seat. To understand what. You know, the, the, exactly what, what's being said in the, in any correspondence or any letter of support. And might lead to having that, oh, you know what, this one is going to go to council as I think through what, what happens next. And that in itself might be enough of a, of a safety, of a safety net because it has. That, that public piece and that piece where it's, your colleagues are going to need to check in with you on what you said in this letter. And I think that would be, I know that would act as a good deterrent for, you know, a good piece for, for me to, to remember that it's, that it's there. Whether that's strong enough for the, those scenarios that we're thinking through that are outside the, the norms, I don't, I don't know. But I think that's, that adjustment alone might actually be enough for this in, in my mind.
Ms. Bass?
Through the chair, if I can just clarify. So prior to the letter of support being sent to the requister, it would appear on the council agenda. Consent agenda?
But I'm, I was thinking after.
Okay.
Someone can always pull it and say, and cause a big fuss about having to write another letter that retracts it or something, like some other. Which would be a dust up and it would be messy. And that's exactly the deterrent, is my thought process.
And that was my intention, that it would appear on council correspondence after.
Yeah, I think personally, I, I think it's maybe a reasonable middle ground understanding that the mayor may. Put themselves in a situation where they've endorsed something and then they have to publicly walk it back. Might be enough to say, well, you know, this one, we'll, we'll put it to council first. And so maybe that's. Counselor Greenlaw?
Well, I'm just wondering how you would actually enforce the mayor walking it back.
It would be a council resolution. So it would be a formal decision of council, which would basically compel the organization to put out the, the letter.
But what if they just wouldn't do it?
I'll just remind council that if, if council directs the mayor to write a letter that the mayor doesn't agree with, the mayor is compelled to do that as the spokesperson. So it, the only power that comes from this seat comes from, you find folks in, in council. And if the majority of council says, hey, you crossed the line, you need to write a letter that says that's not the position. That says XYZ to back it up, then that's what has to happen. So. Yeah, that's the, and if the mayor doesn't do it, then I suppose there's some mechanism to ensure that it gets done. Acting mayor will do it.
Okay, I think we're ready to entertain a motion. I'm assuming everything there was clear, John Eaton, Clarence. Counselor Hamilton?
I actually wanted to bring up a, a topic that you brought up, which was the letters from other orders of government MPs and MLAs. And this line between. Between a, a political position or political promotion and communication. I know that we've had letters that we've retracted that came from some. From some MLAs. And we, we traditionally include. Photo, photos, yeah, photos, correspondence from our MP. Our most recent correspondence from our MP contained lots of valuable information, as well as thirteen photographs of our MP. You know, doing things around our community and, and in other places. I'm not quite comfortable with the level of political self-promotion. Versus communication of federal decisions and federal actions that are happening. I see that line being blurred here. I don't see a solution. But that's, it's a place where I'm a little bit uncomfortable with us forwarding correspondence directly from our MPs and MLAs.
So if I can follow up, they, like, the, there's federal rules and provincial rules and guidance about what is appropriate. And so when you're an MLA or an MP, as long as you, it, it's on side to show the government. And you are part of the government at work. And so in that case, it's appropriate. It's inappropriate. When there's a party affiliation attached to it essentially is, is where the line is. And, and so it's, it's. Yes, as our MP, as our MLA, pictures of you at all kinds of events, that's great because that's the government at all kinds of events. And that's why that's okay. It's just when you say, and my party did this, or I was doing this for my party, that's. Mayor Herford?
Yeah, I think the piece that gets that, where that line is for me is where. I, I agree that this is, this is the, you know, government doing the work, whether it's handing out the, you know, funding announcements or all. um I I agree that this is this is the, you know, government doing the work, whether it's handing out the, you know, funding announcements or all the rest, all the rest of it. That's that's the work of government. I think the where I felt the line was crossed in some of the other correspondence had been where an other party was spoken about in a disparaging way or like something like that. Like, I think it's quite clear, it's quite clear where that where that is. Um, I don't know how we articulate that because we're not the, you know, it'll, we're tempting to direct staff through this policy as to where that where that is. So I'd be curious to, actually, I'm going to go to ask a question to staff. How how has this been? How would you propose for this to be actually used? I think we sort of have a rough understanding of where that there's a line somewhere. Uh, how are how are you understanding that? And do we need to flush it out a bit more?
Uh, well, we could add some clarification around uh correspondence that appears to be uh campaigning or correspondence um putting forward a platform of a political party leading up to an election, those types of things. But I I did, I had thought about that. I thought I had actually included language, but I must have removed it. It's a little bit hard because I I had language in there around, you know, political ideology or political policies. But governments are always talking about their political ideologies and their platforms and their policies. So I I think I think it would need to be blatantly campaign material. But that's that's my take on it. It's council's discretion and how they'd want to see that.
Uh, Mayor Hertford?
Yeah, just as I reflect on the relationship that we have with our elected officials um in other orders of government. I think it's it's maybe telling that where we've had the problem was at the provincial level where our uh currently are our representative forms opposition. And at the federal level, everything's been, it's been better. And that could go down to the individual, but it also is the individual is forming government. So I think that we're far more likely, as these things are ever ebbing and flowing, I I think if we end up with representatives that are in opposition in both levels, then it may become more challenging because there'll be more divisive pieces. So I wonder how it's more just observations and musing rather than a a solution there. But I know that it's far easier for those in in government to communicate the actions of the government than it is for those in opposition to communicate their their positions or the work that they're doing, which is often opposing the government on or holding the government to task, you could say, on on various initiatives, which starts to and that I that line, I think, is much harder to walk than it is when you're in government and you're here's your funding announcements and here are the the proactive things that we're doing and the policy that we're working on and all the rest of it. There's lots to work with there. And it is the the challenge of the folks that are in opposition or um or otherwise in in um in the 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 system they're operating in. So um I think um maybe it's maybe it's a vetting or double vetting or something to if there's a question, it comes to the to the mayor or acting mayor or something to make to help make that call if it's not cut and dry from the from the staff perspective. I'm just trying to think of ways we could support staff in this and get still achieve the.
If if I can inter, I think we may be overcomplicating. From my perspective, it's very clear. It just must be nonpartisan. And we're not here to uh take correspondence from representatives from all parties. It's our MP and our MLA. They can say they're the MP, the MLA, and they're from the federal or provincial government. But as soon as they talk about their party or, you know, it doesn't matter if you're opposition or not, you're you're still an MLA. You're still a member of the B C government, and that's how you talk. And that's what the provincial rules say. And I think as long as we just stick to that, as long as it's nonpartisan, that's fine. As soon as you start talking party, it's offside, I I would say. Uh, Counselor French?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Penningill, for that, because I think you're bang on. Um, I agree, we've maybe straight into overcomplicating. And and for me, it is as simple. It's just that notion of nonpartisan. And I trust that staff can effectively weed out the partisan from the nonpartisan. And if by chance something makes it onto an agenda that a council member feels crosses the line into partisan, it can get pulled out and identified and called out, and we can learn from it from there and adjust if need be.
Uh, Mayor Hertford?
Yeah, I I think that's fine. I I wonder if I know that all other um legislation applies to this policy as well, but it'd be maybe it's worthwhile including that specific language around. And I don't know what where that lives, the the guidelines for the for the representatives, both provincially and federally. Maybe it's worthwhile to just cite those things. And then that's that's that.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy with following provincial guidelines.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion? We are, I'm letting us. Oh, uh, yes.
I apologize for this, but I understand we've read reached some clarity about letters for support. I'm going to allow me a minute to muddy the waters a little bit. I think where we landed is we wanted every letter of support to come to council. I just want to remind council about half of the motions. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I I think where we ended up was that uh they will come on an agenda. So the mayor has the discretion to respond i- immediately, but the the request and the response will go on an agenda and council may, after the fact, slap the mayor's hand and demand or attraction or something.
Okay, what I think my point is is still valid. Um, about half of the motions on our action tractor come from letters to council. And so if the point of having all these wind up on the agenda is to make the process easier, it may in fact have the opposite effect whereby it generates more work. I'll just put that out there for your consideration.
I think what we're talking about here is just specifically around letters of support. So I want you to write a a letter endorsing this this um supportive housing project kind of thing as opposed to every request to council. Does that?
Uh, Counselor Hamilton? Yes, I further clarify, every letter of support, if if you were to write a letter of support right now, if you were to write a letter, if the mayor were to write a letter of support right now, under our current policy, the mayor would need a resolution of council to write that letter. Is that correct? Yeah. So the current change reduces the number of resolutions that council would need to make directing the mayor to write a letter of support.
Mayor Hertford?
It turns it into a counter petition.
Thank you for clarifying the muddy water for me.
All right. Uh, so I guess we have a motion uh to provide the feedback and accept the draft uh correspondence policy. If someone want to move that, Counselor Hamilton, second by Counselor French, all is in favor. Opposed? No, motion carries. Perfect. And now uh we will move to, do we need a couple minutes for Mr. Bragg? Okay. So, yeah, so we'll have to do a few gymnastics here. So I'm going to recess the committee of the whole, so the mayor can start and then recess the uh special business meeting. So uh this meeting is recessed uh temporarily.
Okay. Hello, everybody, and welcome to the special business meeting for District Squamish for uh Tuesday, September third. Um, as always, we're gathered to do our work today on the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Halen Squon, Quist Sutumuk, Taus Squamish Ochmeo. Um, could I have someone move adoption of the agenda, please? Moved by Counselor French, second by Counselor Benningill. Thank you. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, I'll now um recess this meeting to resume following the conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting, um which is underway. Thank you.
And we are back to the committee of the whole meeting. Sorry about that little procedural uh jumping around. I will turn it over to Mr. Bragg, who may need a minute or two more to get the presentation up. But uh over to you, Mr. Bragg, when you're ready. Uh, we're going to have an update on the public works facility.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Cal Bragg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction. This report is on the Public Works Facility. It's a report to council. It's a project update. Um, and and that's an overview update and also updating the Class A indicative cost. The objectives is to state the progress of the Public Works Facility. Um, also to state the cost, we've received the Class A indicative costing and also to identify the next steps in the project. A little bit of background, uh, this project goes back from two thousand and twenty and then prior to that for the real estate facilities master plan. It's been identified as one of the three critical projects along with Fire Hall uh number one, Alex Monroe Fire Hall, and also Fire Hall number two. Design started in two thousand and twenty one. It was also reviewed. Um, its location staff uh dove in to confirm that it is the correct location and the best location in terms of um uh site fit, uh future expansion, servicing the community, timing and opportunity cost. There's been significant cost increases throughout the process since we started the project. We're coming out of the tail end of COVID. We had escalation items to work through, which mean we had to change the size of the project to match the budgets that we're uh that we're working with. Um, and that's what value engineering is, which is to check the scope of the work and to reduce it as much as possible. Um, in two thousand and twenty one, two thousand and twenty two, we've had two commu- uh funding um processes to work through, and that was the AAPs, the Alternative Approval Process. Uh, delayed works for a little while. Um, in Q three in two thousand and twenty two, uh groundwork actually began. And the groundwork included some preload, utility connections, salt shed work and soil contamination management, or some uh salt contamination there we had to work through. In Q one, two thousand and twenty three, the five-year financial plan indicated, uh, oh, sorry, the costs uh for the project was thirty seven million dollars, and that was coming in from a Class C budget. In Q two, two thousand and twenty three, the project was paused, so staff could review overall costs. Uh, and then also work out how we're going to build the project above the flood construction level. Uh, in Q four, two thousand and twenty three, major civil works were back underway, and this included utilities. Uh, the beginning of the three-meter-high wall that's currently on site, we can see at the moment. Um, some backfill and then working the uh the spear, uh which is the in uh stream side protection enhancement area on the north side of the building. Um, and since then, from Q one or this year, um, the project team and staff have been working on detailed design for the building, uh, building approvals, uh, which we're waiting on the final building approval. We've got the foundation permit uh approved. Um, also detailed scheduling and the Class A indicative cost, which is what we're reviewing today. So a little bit on the project detail, the project size of the existing facility that's currently there is thirteen thousand square feet. Um, the new facility is twenty seven thousand two hundred square feet, and this is plot the yard on top of that. It also does not include the existing maintenance bays that are there now, and there's also a newer modular structure. The flood construction level work is well underway. Um, we're raising the whole site three meters. This includes everything from the yard to the maintenance base in the office. Um, and this is to meet the floodplain bylaw and also maximize climate resiliency, resiliency. The cost uh for this is around the five million dollar mark. Uh, also civil works are underway as noted before, which is the preload, uh, we're working through utilities, um, soil contamination, still some leftover items. And also there's two jobs going side by side or two projects. We've got the wastewater treatment plant, which has one general contractor. And then we've got the public works, which is next with another general contractor. So there's a there's a lot of work going on in the on that site at the moment. Um, just a few photos of the actual work. The top left corner there is the site preload. That was from last year. The other two photos is the Gabian wall. It's that's only taken a a couple of weeks ago. That actual wall, the Gabian wall is a a wire mesh uh rock, and we use local rocks to put in there. The reason we're using a Gabian wall is if we have a concrete block wall, particularly along government road there, the ground is a little bit prone to subsidence. So what we what that'll end up doing is is aesthetically, it's not pleasing over time. So the Gabian wall actually hides that quite nicely because in Squamish, we don't have the best soils, so. Just an overview of the design here. This is a three D isometric from the architects. Uh, the top image shows a uh projection looking from the south, looking towards the north. You can see the road on the right-hand side there. Which I mouse is just along here is government road. Um, you can see the whole site is extended up by three meters. We have the building in the center of the site. We've got uh some large setbacks here to allow for utilities that run from Brackendale. Um, and we've also got a a large ramp on the on the southern side, and that's right next to the wastewater treatment plant on the south there. Um, and then you can see on the bottom image there, uh, at the bottom left-hand side, my mouse is not coming on. So the bottom left-hand side, that's called the spear area, and we've recalculated that and reclaimed some land. So the public works has additional yard space there. And then you can see the salt shed on the right-hand side. It's just a a quick overview, bird's eye overview. So in detail, I'll just get into a little bit of nitty gritty here, and I know time is of the essence. So I'll I'll go through this one and and summarize it. It's a pre-engineered steel building. Uh, we have steel sheet facade on the outside. We have a concrete base. Um, the the maintenance bays are actually double sized. We have one high bay. The whole building is accessible and fully accessible. We have an elevator to the second floor offices. The design caters to all genders. As far as the future growth for the site overall, um, we have allowed in the existing budget, design and budget for the bulking of the footings of the structure on the office side. And what this does is allows a third level above the office um of five thousand three hundred square feet. That's not to be built now. Um, but if we do want to build it, it's going to cost an additional five point five to six million dollars. The yard, um, the current salt shed on the yard may be located offsite. Staff have noted there's two other sites that may be able to be put um or moved in the future. The maintenance bay is the west maintenance bay, which is the one on the other side of government road. Um, has allocation space allowed for for another half-size bay there to increase maintenance base size in the future. Um, and as far as parking is concerned, we've got about seventy spaces allocated here. We've got bike parking. We've also got dumb spaces for um charging stations for bikes as well. On the sustainability side, it's a hundred percent electric building with all our facilities that we're building right now and renovating as best we can. Um, ninety percent, aiming for a ninety percent waste uh reduction to landfill. That's um high. Um, but we're going to go for that. We've we've worked that with the project team. We'll see how we go here. Anything above seventy five percent is what we're working to from bylaw. So um, the office is the equivalent of a step code three. Initially, we came to council and said we're working at step code two, so we've actually increased that somewhat. The maintenance bays are not governed by a step code. Um, so the focus on reducing GHG emissions here is on the office side. Um, specifically the Teddy, the Tuie and the GHGI numbers. Um, and I won't go into too much detail there, but the thermal energy demand intensity, the total energy use intensity and greenhouse gas intensity um over as an overview that between twelve and half and twenty five percent better than the National Energy Code of Canada and the B C Build Code. And we've also got a very efficient wall system here. We've only got an eight percent window to wall uh ratio, which means there's not any windows in the in in the um in the facility. So the max recommended there is about fourteen percent and permitted by energy codes forty percent, just to give you a bit of background to compare to. Project cost indication currently in the five-year financial plan were at thirty seven million dollars. The Class A has come back at thirty six point three million dollars. That includes a risk register of one point three five million dollars. And what a risk register is, is a very specific best guess, but an intrinsic number of what could go wrong specifically on this project. And we put a line item against each item. So it's another contingency, so to speak. This doesn't include an overall client-side contingency. Um, the Royal Architect Institute of Canada recommends a five percent contingency at Class A. Um, staff have dove into this with the project team, and we're looking at increasing that by point four percent. And the reason for that is that we're still in the ground. Um, there's risk and a lot of unknown unknown still with this project. The utility connections are not connected, and we have to raise them three meters. So again, there's a lot of uh risk associated with that. The spear on the environmental side, we've still got some um replanting to do. The the final costs are slight unknown at the moment. We've got two sizable mains to work with on the site, and that's the large one going out to Brackendale there. And then we're also, as noted before, we're working very close with two general contractors between each other. So this is where five point five four percent has come in from an overall contingency. So the increased request is one point three million dollars or three point four percent above the existing number that's in the five-year financial plan. The project schedule originally was finishing in Q four, two thousand and The project schedule originally was finishing in Q4 2025. We're giving ourselves a little bit of a buffer to finish in Q1 2026. We're now finally at the scheduling where we have very detailed scheduling. We're confident of the numbers of where we're sitting at. The next steps in the project from now until handover, towards the end of this year, will be continuing the civil works, receiving building approval very shortly here for the actual building itself. Starting the actual building foundation work early next year. We may even get into it later this year. Q2 2025, we'll be installing the prefabricated steel structure and then from there we'll be going to final handover and occupancy. Would you like me to read out the resolution?
We can read it. Thank you. Appreciate the information. Council questions? Counsel French?
Thanks Chair. In reading through this report, I didn't see any reference to optic wiring. And then that had me thinking, I don't recall fiber optic being mentioned in the previous projects for the two fire halls. Is there fiber optic component in the building?
Through the chair, good question. I actually don't have a good answer for you on that one. I'm assuming there would be. We need to, I mean, the requirements for CAT 5 and CAT 6 are greatly reduced now with Wi-Fi coming through. Whereas, you know, 10 years ago, we had CAT 5 and CAT 6 going everywhere and fiber optics becomes a big item. So wireless has now become the big item that we focused on, but I actually don't know from the fiber optic specification level.
Okay, I don't necessarily need to hear back on that. And I didn't even think about Wi-Fi when I was formulating the question and going through. And one more question. And I hesitate to even ask about this because of costs associated on a project that's already got a big budget behind it. The, there doesn't appear to be a waste shed or a waste room. And the, one of the images, it looks like it shows a potential cardboard bin and a garbage bin and some totes in the outdoors in the northwest corner, I think. So I wonder if you could just talk to us a little bit about waste management and how we have arrived at not having a shed.
Through the chair, we haven't completed that area just yet. The information that you have is the building permit drawing. So there's a little bit of detail that's missing and that's actually a good pickup. That's one of the detail that's not complete there. So we're still working with public works operations for what they need inside for the separation of waste and then also outside. We basically got outside nailed as far as what's required. We just haven't shown that on the building permit drawings yet.
Okay, great. And then that just has me thinking about Bear Smart and I'll leave it at that. Thanks Chair.
Mayor Hertford?
Yeah, thank you for this for this update. It's great to see this advancing as challenging as this as this project has been so far, but I think we're getting far clearer. I had a question from the from the sort of from some of the adjacent residents around the lighting. And just, you know, their comparator was the car dealership down the road, just how bright it is. And is that? Is that something that, what are we thinking about lighting of this site and so on? Have we got, is that? It doesn't feel to be purely operational, but I know a portion of that will be is how well lit it is at what time. But could you speak to the general sort of guidelines that you've been using to around the lighting plans so far and how that could impact the residential's uses nearby?
Yeah, through the chair. That's a, it's a good question. We have dove into this. We've, we've seen some of the feedback as well. So obviously when you raise the site, you know, the the light now becomes a significant issue as it's, it's raised. So we we know this. We've changed the way that the light comes down and the shadowing. And we're trying to shadow the residents on the east side as much as possible. Because I think they're the major ones that are affected and north side, not so much because of the amount of trees that are there. So we've worked with our internal planning department. We're going beyond it's the minimum required here. And there's a few things that we're focusing on. One is the actual lumens and the brightness. What do we need there? And there's a certain level that we're hitting. Also, it's the Kelvin's and the warmth of the light and making sure that it's not yeah, it's the least impactful as possible as we possibly can. And the way that their lights is positioned here, it's not shining directly into any area. We've still got a little bit of ways to go. The front area is another issue because we have a lower side there and it's actually more light required for that rather than just having a couple of lights on the top to to sort of broaden that area. So we do have additional lights along the front, but we've also got some pretty strong systems that we can keep the shadowing away from the residential. That's probably the best way to describe it at the moment. It's not finished. We know it's an issue and we're addressing it. And we'll be making sure that in the future, we don't have any lighting issues with the public.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Hamilton?
Yeah, thanks very much. Thanks very much for all the work. Huge project and has seen quite a few hiccups in the last few years. So we're at a, this is a Class A estimate. Correct. So it was my understanding from our, from a previous conversation in November, that a Class A estimate would be, we would have a more fulsome budgetary breakdown of how we arrive at the 37 million. What are the costs coming into this? Is that available to us?
Through the chair, we do have a breakdown. Further to that, we just received the full breakdown of numbers from each of that area. So the mechanical, for example, or the plumbing costs, we've gone out to tender and got those prices as well. The question of what gets submitted publicly is something I need to internally go back to answer that question. But we can definitely provide an overview and a breakdown of the build cost and they put it as a percentage. So mechanical as a percentage and will be the cost on that. We'll see the framing as a percentage in the cost on that. So we can provide that. The level of detail going into the tender, we probably can't provide. I need to go and check that internally.
And just to be clear, whether we can provide it publicly or we can provide it to council, if there's any reason why it can't, I can, I can imagine many reasons why maybe quotes can't be provided publicly. But I'd like to understand if they can't be provided to council, why that might be. And because I want to, and I want to understand. Okay, so next I want to understand the timing a little bit better. I noticed we've had a couple of months delay from the nine months ago when you were presenting. We've, we've had a two-month shift in those in those nine months. Is the construction period expected to be 15 months or 18 months? Because the staff report said 15 months. But the table just below that 15 months has 18 months, like on your table that you presented here.
Through the chair, it's probably slightly ambiguous because we're splitting the actual construction of the building and then we've got the actual platform as well. So sorry for being ambiguous there. Construction's finishing in 2026. I've actually got the schedule here. And I can't answer that. I'll find that information because there's too much on here, but I do have that information for you.
Right. So I'm referring to the the table you have a few slides back. You've got six quarters blacked out as the construction period, which I assume is is 18 months. But the line before that in the report to council says construction expected to be 15 months. So those two things just didn't seem I wanted to know. It, it didn't give me confidence in us, in our predictive ability of the construction timeline when we had two. So this one is 18 months, right?
Through the chair, yes.
Yeah. And then if you look at the staff report, the line before that says 15 months. So I'd like to be sure that we have a clear vision. We know how much delays cost. And I want to make sure we have a clear vision of our project, how long things are going to be expecting to take. Yeah.
Through the chair, there is a mistake on the report. It's not 15 months, it's 18 months. So thank you for picking that up.
Okay, thanks. Another thing that I wanted to, that my understanding of a Class A estimate was it was really at the point where we sign tenders and agreements with contractors. I've been trying to understand how municipal budgets can control or maintain cannot escalate, can can stop ballooning and exploding. And one of the feedback cycles that I see might happen, might be happening within the industry, is that councils set a budget and then the quotes and tenders come in to fill the budget. I'm not saying that's necessarily what happens, but I could see that being a potential feedback mechanism. Are we at the point now where if council, and I know this is not a council resolution right now, to increase the budget to 38.3 million? But if we increase the budget to 38.3 million before the next budget cycle, are we guaranteed to have this delivered? Are we saying, does this Class A estimate mean that there are contractors willing to sign that this building will be delivered by 38.3 million? And if there is a mistake or a problem, they eat the cost and not us? Or are we still at the point where this is the estimate and we'll have to eat any additional increases?
Through the chair, it's a good question. And even if we are in a stipulated some contract where the contractors are saying they can build for X amount, it's construction and there's going to be inherent risk in construction. And as a client, if we don't add some contingency on top of that, it's not a smart way to move forward. So what we're doing now is we're locking in as best as we possibly can. So the system we've got on this project is a construction management system where everything is open. We see all the tenders coming in from the contractor. So we see their prices that they're getting and we help them choose what price to get. So we're involved in that process. We also know that the the main general contractor has a building fee and that's attributed as a percentage of that work. So we're involved in that process. And then what happens is we lock that into a stipulated sum based on the contracts that the general contractor has with their subcontractors. So everything is as locked in as we possibly can for the Class A. So we've seen the market pricing. We've walked down the road with the with the contractor and now we're locking it in with them. They still hold the risk for the project at the end of, or we do as the client at the end of the day, but they do hold the risk saying we're going to build it for X amount. In this particular instance, it is the 36 point. It's going to get the exact number here. It is this 36.3 million dollars that we've got from that process where we can lock that in. What we're suggesting now is we're going to pad that slightly from our side just for contingencies to make sure that we are going to hit this budget because we don't want to come back to council later and so we need some more money. So to answer your question, the 36.3 is as locked in as possibly we can with the constituents that we're working with. And we're having a bit of money in our back pocket just to cover anything if it could go wrong.
So, and I think maybe your comment, we don't want to come back to council. I think maybe that's the crux of what I'm getting at. I think that that may be part of the feedback cycle, that council says, oh yeah, it's okay to spend another 1.3 million because we've budgeted for it. So we don't have to go back to council. I'd like to see a really clear justification for not just leaving 30, 36.3, is it? 30, 30?
Correct.
The 36 million. Have that be the amount budgeted. And then if something goes wrong, if contingency needs to be spent to come back to council at that point. Because I, I want to find ways to to really prevent this continued cost escalation. And I don't see another mechanism other than council putting limits.
Through the chair, the Royal Institute, Architect Institute of Canada has their systems on the Class D, Class C, Class A, and what contingency should be put in there. It is understanding that cost creep can happen where people say, you know, this is the budget and they're going to build right up to that budget where they could have actually built it for 10%. This comes down to then having the right builder, the right project manager internally and the right systems to make sure that everyone understands that. So a heads up on this particular builder, they were the same builder that we used on Fire Hall Number One. They're also the same builder that we've got on Brennan Park at the moment. So we trust that their system, regardless of what the budget is, they're going to go out and get a market number, not rely on a budget number that we've installed in front of them.
Okay, thanks. And in, I guess I'll leave that the rest for comment. Thanks.
Just one question my own. I want to make sure I understand what the report is saying. So in my first quick read of this, I sort of read, okay, we had 36.3, we need another 1.3 because there's been some escalation. That 1.3 is tied to the risk register. And I don't think that's correct. Is it accurate to say, in going from the Class B to the Class A, there has been some general escalation, sort of a, would you say it's consistent across the board? And then when we look at the contingency and so on, we end up at this number and needing the extra 1.3, but it's not attributable to one specific thing. Is that accurate?
Through the chair, as we move through this system from Class D, C, B and A, we actually get more information on the project. The details that come through are much more specific and we're getting to a point where we're confident of knowing the whole scope of work. And at Class A, you're very much close to knowing the whole scope of work. The change from Class B to A is that gap and it's the estimation gap of what we don't know. So now we know most of it and we've priced accordingly to that. Does that answer the question?
I guess maybe where I'm, was there in one particular area, a couple of areas where our estimates were more incorrect? Or was it sort of we were off by, I'm not sure what we are, point percentage or whatever, sort of roughly equivalent across the board? Or is there one or two things we're like, oh yeah, we missed that or we underestimated that one thing? That's the majority of this 1.3.
Through the chair, there's nothing to pinpoint. It's, there's so many moving parts on this project that there wasn't one thing specifically that's pushed us up over.
Okay, thank you. So not seeing any more hands, council motion to receive, I guess. Mayor moves, Secunder, Counsel Hamilton, any discussion? Mayor Hertford?
Yeah, just, just thank you to, to staff for their continued efforts on on this and and keeping, doing the best to keep it on on track through a very challenging time from a cost escalation perspective and and also a very challenging site. So I think this is an important piece of of our facilities for the community. I look forward to seeing this advancing. It's great to see a timeline that that now includes when we'd be expecting to have it turned over and thus operating to serve the community. It's much needed. So thank you.
Hey, Counsel Hamilton, then Counsel French?
So may I ask one question? Are we clarif-? No, I guess no. Okay. Thank you for the hard work on this. I know that you're pushing hard to keep this project on track and on budget. In order for us to support you, I need more information before I can support a budget increase on this item. I need to understand in detail how our budgets are escalating so far out of our own estimates. Because our budgets that we proposed back eight, nine months ago and two years ago, they included escalations. Or what we expect them to, what the escalation is expected to be two years from now. And we build escalation into our budgets. And so to come back a year later and say escalation is the reason doesn't really sit right with me because we should be building cost escalation into our budgets. So I'm not actually, so I support the motion to receive, but I will not support an increase. I do not plan on supporting an increase in this budget line item unless I have a much clearer understanding of why this budget has increased and how we can prevent budget creep happening in the future.
Counsel French?
Thanks Chair. And I'm speaking in favor of the motion on a project that's been hurting my head dating back to 2018. With the $16 million initial projected budget to now, we're hearing this figure of 38.3 million. And I agree with Counselor Hamilton, more information on this project is better than less information. And, and I think that applies to any capital project that involves building, whether it's the Brennan Park improvements, whether it's the fieldhouse that we've locked into. Any project that involves building, I would like for us to be inundated with information so that we really understand the numbers. And then having said all that, our community needs this building. And the members of our public's work team, they deserve a better work environment than what they have right now. So let's get building on this before the price goes up another 50%.
Yeah, thanks. Happy to receive this. This one has been challenging. I think we are saddled with trying to make up from lost time and and, you know, trying to not only trying to make up from lost time and and, you know, trying to not only play catch up but plan for a future that is very much different, a lot more disaster prone and really dependent on public work. So thinking about how you design these buildings is is different than what people might have thought ten or twenty years ago. And so we are doing a lot of that catch up. And I think, you know, it's important to recall, we did have, I think, the timing of this relative to COVID. We know that was an impact, which unfortunately, just the timing impacted a bit more, but there was, and I don't know what the correct word is, but we missed the flood construction piece early on, and I think my understanding is that is a huge piece of this. And while it's unfortunate, it is a a reality, and I think it is an unavoidable one. We have also, we also know about the the delays in the AAP process, which added some significant cost and delay. So we have sort of been made aware of the things that have been going on, but I do think it's worthwhile to make sure that everyone is on board, that, you know, maybe we need sort of a refresher on some of that information and collecting it all and seeing it presented clearly is is probably worthwhile for us and the and the community. So it has been definitely a tough project. I'll be glad when this is done. It'll be three sort of highest priority real estate facility master plan projects done, which will be great when that's happened. And yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. So with that, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Hey, motion carries. Thank you. And motion to terminate. Mayor Herford, Counsel Greenlaw seconds. All those in favor? Motion carries. We will take a fifteen.
Mayor Herford, turn to you.
I think we'd, I'd like to start the special business meeting and be looking for a motion to close. Moved by Counsel Pedengel, second by Counsel Greenlaw, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. And then we'll take a fifteen minute recess to reset the room, and we'll continue when they close at five after. Thank you.